All right, welcome everyone. I'm glad you're here. This is a regular city council meeting. Some of you were here for the workshop, so let me remind you of the difference. In the regular city council meeting, it's formal. Make sure all electronic equipment, cell phones, computers, et cetera, are turned off and put away. They're not allowed in council chambers except by Texas State Law Government Code Section 551.023. If you want to talk or you have conversation to make, please step outside. We have a large crowd this evening and it can be very distracting if people are talking while we are working. So with that, I'm going to call this meeting to order and please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, funded and indivisible.
Please be seated. City Secretary, we have a forum this evening with all council members present. City Secretary, proof of notice of meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice of this meeting was posted on Friday, December 1st by Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
Yes, first up, we have Karen Cantrell, Ward 1, discussing TDS contract amendments.
Karen, as you make your way here, let me remind everybody that you have three minutes for public comments. The council members cannot comment or answer questions. It's just solely for us to listen. And when you come to the podium, please state your name and ward, even though the city secretary has done that.
My name is Karen Cantrell, I live in Ward 1. Let me start off with saying that we pay TDS $1.7 million a year. That being said, there is an ordinance in our code of ordinances at Section 82-37, that the containers are be to be provided by the contracted waste hauler. Will they do that? What's important is the second line. The contracted waste hauler will provide and maintain collection containers for all residents and businesses within city limits. I took a little time on Sunday and drove around town over on North Orange, the large dumpster, as you will. It has one cover on one side that stands up straight like this. How's it supposed to keep trash in there? There's another shorter one down on West Eagle Pass in the same condition. I didn't even, I won't go into the warped covers, just the missing ones. On South Orange, there's a metal dumpster with no covers at all. So I went over to the southeast side. There were plenty over there that need to be repaired as well. So I say before we pay them any more money or amend the contract, because they usually don't go down with that amendment, that they, that the city council members tour their wards and look at these collection containers and state the condition that they're in. I don't, I really don't want to pay them any more money until they maintain their previous equipment. So this is what I, I think the council members should tour their wards, give them, give the information to Megan, so then she has something to counter their amendment with. Because $1.7 million is a lot of money. And they don't even pick up the illegal dumping for months. That's the other thing. Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Karen. City Secretary, do we have any other public comments?
Next up, we do have Mike Atwood, Ward 4, discussing action item number 1.
Okay, remember, Mr. Atwood, that council members cannot respond to you. All we can do is listen. And then please restate your name and ward.
Hi, I'm Mike Atwood, Ward 4. Thank you for your time. I'm here to speak regarding rezon application 2023-10-01-A. A great deal of discussion is taking place since this issue has been addressed at council and at planning and zoning as C2. In that instance, P&amp;Z voted to recommend not approving rezoning. The second go-round, P&amp;Z voted unanimously to recommend not approving the C0 rezoning. It's my understanding that this vote by P&amp;Z triggers a need for a supermajority vote by council. In addition, city is in receipt of rezoning protests from three property owners who received a 200-foot notification letter. These protests would have also triggered the requirement of a supermajority vote had not P&amp;Z already acted. While there may be many issues related to alternative methods permitting businesses to operate in neighborhood zone residential, they cannot be more detrimental than indiscriminately changing the zoning from residential to commercial. I strongly urge council to honor the social contract residents have with city government and vote to keep our residential neighborhood residential. Thank you.
Thank you. City Secretary, any additional public comments?
Lastly, we do have Jenny Hatch, Ward 5, discussing action item number 1.
Okay, Ms. Hatch, please come on up. Remember, council can't respond to you. Please restate your name and ward.
I'm Jenny Hatch, Ward 5. I was recently made aware of the regulation change allowing barber and beauty shops that are attached to residences. When I spoke to council at the last meeting, my information was outdated. In no way did I intend to mislead the council. I had not thoroughly researched the matter since Tara did not wish to have her shop in her home for other reasons beyond regulations. I do want to say that she trusted my say in the matter and did not do her own research since I did serve on the advisory board for 12 years. I regret that I gave her and the council outdated and false information, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. All right, City Secretary.
And that concludes public comments this evening.
Okay, so public comments are finished. Presentations, recognitions, and proclamations are next up. There are none. Reports. City Secretary, please put six minutes on the timer. City Mayor report. I just wanted to mention that some of our nonprofit organizations within the community have done a fabulous job. They have been working very hard. The Alpine Historic Association is the one that brought us the wassail crawl and the county tree lighting, as well as the Christmas stroll that we had this past Saturday. So they are working very hard. Alpine Community Projects is still working on the nursing home. We've had several more meetings with other individuals within the community in regards to the nursing home. So that is still moving along. And then also, we have an applicant, if we have any positions available, that wants to be a member of a board. And I believe the city secretary has sent council an email. You guys would look at that and see if there might be a place for this individual for that. And I just wanted to remind council to continue thinking about the charter and any policy updates, things that you would want for donations to nonprofits for the next fiscal year. And then if and when we should offer businesses tax abatements for economic development. So just keep those in the back of your mind, and I'm sure that we will bring it up in a discussion item, maybe in January or February, whenever we have a space available for that. That concludes my report. There's no city attorney report. City manager, you're up.
I'll try to use this miss. So what was in the package provided to the public as well as the council is the September 2023 summary of revenue and expenditures. I'm running through it. Bottom line, we did underspend based on our revenue collections, which is obviously wonderful, because that means they're building our fund balance. General fund, we brought in 5.5 million and we spent about 4.5 million. Waste water, water and sanitation, we brought in about 5 million and we spent about 4.6 million. Airport brought in 800,000. We spent about 750,000. Hotel occupancy, 766,000 was brought in. We spent 782,000. Please note, council did approve using reserves, so that actually works out perfect. Gas utility brought in 2.1 million and spent 1.9 million. And in our INS, we brought in 161,000. We spent our required 149,000 for debt. These aren't final numbers. As we go through the audit process, we do record some of the items, our liabilities and some of our leases. So these will reflect a slight difference. But we did underspend overall, and we will continue to do that even with the audit. So we'll still put money towards our fund balance.
So just to kind of put a summary together, our revenue budget was $15.4 million. We brought in well over $14.5 million. So we were short about 900,000 bucks of the city's credit. We underran $2.7 million. So the good news is $1.8 million is going to go into fund balance, and that's what we're going by.
Yes, they do a great job. And then, of course, we go into October, so new fiscal year. It's really hard to really report anything because it's the first month. We're not bringing in the significant revenue for the general fund. That is going to be our property taxes. We don't expect those payments until December, January, February. And so for October, we brought in almost 270,000, but we spent 384,000. Not worried whatsoever. It's the first month. We're always going to exceed our expenditures the first month in our revenue. Waste water, 389,123 in expenditures. Airport brought in 41,959, spent 84,636. Don't worry, I'll talk to Abel. It's fuel. It's our most expensive, but we also maintain an inventory with our fuel as well. These are just actual expenses and revenues. Hotel fund brought in 7,000 and spent 63,000. Gas utility brought in 74,000, spent 79,000. Our interest in thinking, which is our debt payments, which we only make twice a year, February and September, we brought in a little over 2,000 and we have not made those payments. And so the first year, not worried about, or the first month, we're not worried about anything because we know that, you know, over the next 11 months, it will balance out. All of our departments are working towards those big projects. So you'll see some of those heavy expenses come now instead of later. Any big expenses after June, council will definitely be aware of because we're hoping to have everything pretty much locked in by then. We're not having these huge unexpected expenses. And in light of the changes we've made with the different departments and our meetings and exceeding time limits and trying to keep everyone, you know, here for a period of time. I'm going to start doing a brief update on one or two departments for the next couple of months until we kind of decide the direction we're going to go. And I'm going to start with the airport. I'm just going to hit the highlights of what we've been working at. I know there's been a lot of discussion with, you know, the airport and different departments. And so with the airport, you know, Abel and Riley are our two employees out there. They manage the airport 24/7. It's not a, I go home at 5 o'clock kind of job. Some of the things that they've been looking at really are things that will benefit themselves as well. One being software. They have the oldest software system within the city. If it crashes, we're dead. There's nothing we can do. The individual no longer lives in Alpine that created it. I believe he's in India. We're just kind of stuck. Abel, in all his wisdom and years of experience, has actually learned the software pretty well, including understanding what additions we can do to it and what we can't do to it. And then he has me telling him, don't touch it. And one of the things we're looking at with the software is our ability to manage fuel. Right now, it really is just used as data entry. Put in a receipt, you put in your inventory, and you don't touch anything else. So he's been looking at that. One of my projects has been the ERP for software, so we're going to add a little plug in there for airport, see if we can get anything. But understanding our fuel is the biggest thing. That is their one primary source of revenue for the airport. The second being, of course, the hangar leases. The fuel is highly important, and there's been a lot of discussion. Abel was kind enough to provide me some research. We are competitive right now with our surrounding areas. For some, we are actually lower. But that doesn't mean that we don't make improvements, and that doesn't mean that we don't spice it up, change it up a little bit. But we also have to make sure we have the resources to do it. One being, the next thing is our credit card. We are on an antiquated system out there with the credit card system that's attached to the fuel pumps, which are also kind of old. So he's been looking at that and what options do we actually have? These are expenses, but we're going to try to take full advantage of the ramp 90/10, where we literally have 100 grand. This is a huge investment for the city that we need to really harness and move forward with. So I know Abel's been working on that. In addition to everything else I've added.
Explain what a ramp 90/10 is, please.
So the ramp is the routine airport maintenance program. It is a Texas-funded grant. It is kind of our, we're going to give you some money, but you can only use it for certain things. So it's typically been a 50/50% split. Well, this year, they made it a 90/10, which means the state will cover 90% of allowable expenses, and we only have to come up with that 10%. But it does have a list of what we're allowed to spend it on. And we have a saying, if it has wills, they're going to deny it. So we're not going to get a tractor. We're not going to get a lawnmower. We're not going to get anything of those natures. But it also will help pay for taxiway paving, which we're moving forward with. It will help pay for software. It will help pay for regular maintenance, our beacon, which we've been having some issues with as well. So there's a long list of wants that we're going to try to knock out with this 90/10. Typically, it's been between 20 and 30,000 a year. This year, they're giving us 100,000. That's kind of the max, unless I think we kind of send that please, 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 which we've done in the past, and they've given us a little extra. But this is the first time any of us have ever seen this. I double-checked four or five times because I, too good to be true thought process. But no, it has been confirmed. We've signed the grant. It's been submitted to the state.
Good deal.
So in addition to working the ramp grant and all the expenditures and trying to improve our airport, we've had some incidents come up lately that are kind of like, well, you know, we don't have any really rule or regulations that guide that or give us kind of an insight of what we want to do. Abel had worked on them once before, updating the rules and regulations. The last time they were updated, I believe, was in 2016. It's been a while. We have a cookie cutter copy of the rules and regulations. The State of Texas Aviation Department provides us that cookie cutter. These are what we really need in order to stay in compliance with all of our Texas aviation grants. So Abel's been doing some research, things that we've looked at just recently. I know Mr. Stevens brought up, you know, we have a plane sitting on our ramp that doesn't quite work. They could try to fly without the propeller, but you know, may not get far. But we don't have that guidance or that regulation in place that says you can't do that. We have some for other areas, but not specifically. So we've been looking at our rules and regulations and reached out to other cities as well to have that, what do you do in these incidents? There's also information in there that's a little bit outdated that I would like to update. Would also like to put clarification with procedures. You know, we're not, we allow other people to have fuel on the airport itself, but there are rules and regulations in which we have to follow. Right now, we follow mostly the fire ones. You know, you can't have it within 50 feet of a hanger. You can't have it with, you know, it has to be in a specific type of container. But there's not the, how do you pay the fuel fee? How do you get acknowledged? There's just a whole process in place that we want to include in that. So we've been looking at that as well and cleaning some of that up. We do, moving on to the next, we have a new hanger application. We do have an individual who's interested in building a hanger out there, and Abel's been working with that individual some minor details with, you know, construction and the process. Once we actually get a hanger application fully completed, Abel and I will sit down with the individual, kind of go over some of the, you know, permitting, the process, and then we'll bring it before council for final approval. I'm excited. You know, we want growth out there. But then that goes back to the last part with, we can't continue to grow our hanger base because we have an AWAS in the way. And federal requirement requires that within 500 feet of that AWAS, you can build. And so we have to relocate that AWAS, which is really good news because we have all this grant and funding coming down. Currently, we are moving forward with our layout plan. The AWAS relocation will be part of that layout plan, which will make it 10 times easier to actually apply and have it relocated. The beacon is also being considered. The taxiway is also being considered. And I found out that the FAA has approved 159,000 for last fiscal year, 145,000 for the current year, and 144,000 for the next year. I have been speaking with our tech spot planner, Mr. Camargo. We haven't allocated this specifically to anything, but because we have all of these grant wishes coming up, we can allocate these funds so the city's not having to provide that much. So hopefully, fingers crossed, everything will fall into place as planned. And the airport will have a plan, a layout plan to move forward. We'll get the AWAS, we'll get the rules and regulations, we'll look at our fuel system. We'll also look at our fuel providers. There are a wealth of providers out there. Our current contract is from the 70s, the magical year or decade.
Everything's from the 70s.
Like that. So just be prepared. The airport's not just out at the edge of town doing nothing. They actually have a full list. And Abel and Riley do stay busy and look forward to seeing what happens.
Okay, go ahead.
Question on timing for the taxiway.
So if I could get John, depending on his quote and actually our conversation in January, if he stays with under the 50 and I look at procurement, I can move forward with just him. But then we can't use that company for any other without the RFP. So in January, the game plan is to come before council and discuss paving strategy a little bit to know what direction I need to do with an RFP. But like I said, 90/10, I'm not worried about the money. The lighting project has concluded. They have finalized that project, and the city is receiving a refund.
Good deal.
So that money coming back in from that, we can utilize it for paving. We can utilize it for that part of that 100,000 that the city didn't originally have budgeted that we can.
So you're, you've got a good dialogue going with Johnny?
I've reached out to him, but it's hidden this. So I haven't actually talked to him personally, but I have quotes.
I won't. So I'll leave it to you. If you need me to reach out through his chain, so we get it with you, I won't.
Good, yes, yes, delicate.
Little update on the airport. Two-man team doing a wonderful job.
Yes, thank you.
For those who don't know what AWAS is, it's the Aviation Weather Observation System. You can actually call it, and it'll tell you what the weather is at the airport at that very second. All those aviators use it to decide what we're, whether we're to take off or whether we land.
So you have its phone number.
But it's also 119.02 on PHF ratings.
Thank you.
That wasn't six minutes, I don't think, but I tried.
That's okay. You did well compared to what has happened in the past. Very good. All right, so that was the city manager's report. No city staff updates. And before we begin this next section, let me remind you, if you have a public comment, once again, council cannot respond. We can only listen, and you'll have three minutes to make your comment, and the city secretary will let you know when your time is up. So we're moving to public hearings. The time is 5:52 PM. All right, public hearing number one, to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the first reading of ordinance 2023-12-01 and ordinance approving rezon application 2023-10-01-A, amending the official zoning map of the city by rezoning the property located at 401 West Soul Ross and legally described as the east 18.89 feet of lots 8, 9, 10, all of lots 1, 2, and 3, and that portion of the platted alley lying between said lots, all out of block 28, original townsite of Alpine, envelope 184, plat records of Brewster County, Texas, from R2 to Family District to C0 Office Services District. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended denial of this zoning change. Do I have anyone here to speak on this? Okay, Mr. Walter, come on up. Please state your name and your ward. And once again, council cannot respond to you. You'll have three minutes.
Walter, Ward 4, and Planning and Zoning Committee. And we did recommend disapproval of that. But I will note that we recommended approval of keeping it as a residential neighborhood, but changing the the regulations to make it so that they could open up a, what's known as a single business or a single chair barber shop or cosmetology establishment. I wanted to make a note of that, and so we did approve that.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anyone else here to speak on this? Okay, come on up. Ms. Salas, please state your name and ward. And remember, council can't respond.
Ms. Salas, Ward 2. In reference to that public hearing that we have in question, there's a lot of businesses or buildings in downtown area that this establishment could go into so that our little town doesn't look so empty. And I think we need to get away from having businesses in residential areas. You know, because we need to keep our residents that are around that surrounding area in mind. I know it's probably not a heavy-duty traffic, but nonetheless, it is a residential area.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Okay, Tom, please state your name and ward. And remember, council can't respond to you.
Tom Robinson, Ward 1. I'd just like to ask the council to consider the statement that building official Andrew Devaney made at the last meeting, at the last zoning and planning meeting with regard to this C0 status. According to Andrew, the C0 designation, it's been put in place for just this reason, to act as a buffer between, you know, larger businesses and keep them out of quiet neighborhoods. The C0, as you probably all know, is for more office-type businesses. And, you know, I think that a lot of the talk of some of the possibilities of commercial businesses coming in, such as a Dollar General or a gas station, it's, it's, it's like a red herring. You know, it's not possible in a C0 district. And I believe that C0 is designed to be more in harmony with a residential area.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to public hearing item number two. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the first reading of ordinance 2023-12-02 and ordinance amending Appendix C zoning, Article 1, Schedule District, Section 2-R-1, One Family District to the Alpine Code of Ordances, repealing the requirement that beauty shops are not acceptable use in residential area by approved special permit, providing the establishment of up to $500 penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of this ordinance. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, please come on up. And name and ward again. I know it's redundant.
Ms. Salas, Ward 2. The only question I have is, why are we doing this amendment? Are the amendments going to happen on these ordinances every time something like this comes up? We need to also stay pretty focused on the ordinances that are in place. If it's a big difference, then I'm all for it. But if we're just going to change it and amend it because we're trying to accommodate someone else, then that's not what city council's all about.
Anyone else here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number three. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding replat 2023-11-01, a replat application allowing the applicant Jose Cobos to combine lots in order to provide the ability to use a primary address at the subject property without the necessity of building a primary structure on one lot. The subject property is located at South 6th Street and West Avenue F and is legally described as lots 5 and 6, block 55, original townsite of Alpine, Texas, as shown in the subdivision plat on file in volume 2, page 97. Need records of Brewster County, Texas. The record property owner is Jose Cobos. The property ID of the subject property is 35832. The current zoning classification of the property is R3 Apartment District. At the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R3 Apartment District. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of this replat. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number four. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding replat 2023-11-02, a replat application allowing the applicant Ruben Montalabah to combine lots to allow the applicant to install a structure over currently existing common lot lines. The subject property is located at South 14th Street and West Murphy Street and is legally described as lots 5 and 6, block 9. Thomas Turney Higgins addition to the city of Alpine is shown in the subdivision plat on file in envelope 108, plat records of Brewster County, Texas. The record property owners are Ruben Montalabah and Nevis Paradis. The property ID of the subject property is 12- The property ID of the subject property is one two eight eight five. The current zoning classification of the property is R four mobile home district. At the lead, at the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R four mobile home district. The planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of this replat. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number five. Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Dash oh three, a short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at two oh two North Fourth Street. The property owner of record is Carl Broach, the parcel ID of the subject property is one one nine oh six. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number six. To obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh four. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at one zero zero four. West Del Rio Street, the property owner of record is Justin Talent and Colleen West. The parcel ID of the subject property is three zero three seven nine. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Please come forward, state your name and ward. Mister Fielder, and remember, council can't respond.
So my name is Guy Fielder, I live in Ward five, I have properties in uh two and four. The, I just want to, it's a cautionary just statement, basically. Um had property on an island in Florida that sort of went through this similar process. If you look, we have had so many applications for short term rentals. Every one of these short term rentals stops being a long term rental. And if we're not careful in five years, maybe ten years, there's going to be nothing left to rent and we're going to be a a community. Of short term lent rentals with no permanent residences. Now I know there's laws that govern this, but I would opine. The council may be consider creating some ordinances to limit how many short term rentals. We can have in our community. That can be a percentage of all homes. It can be a total number of homes, but if we don't do something to stop this. This process is going to end up where the students have no place to rent. And the people that are highway patrol, border patrol, who are rotated in and out of areas will have no place to rent. So just keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to public hearing number seven to obtain citizen views and comments regarding. Special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh five, a special use. Permit for the purpose of allowing the applicant Lowe's Market number one seventy-eight to obtain a wine only packaged store permit. From the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission to operate a grocery store with alcohol sales. The property in question is located at one oh four North Second Street. The record property owner is Porter and Company LTD, the property ID of the subject property is one one seven nine two. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on to number eight, public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding. Special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh six, a short term rental. Special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at four oh one East Avenue A. The property owner of record is Richard K Zimmer, E T U X two. The parcel ID of the subject property is one one zero nine seven. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Alright, seeing none, we're moving on. The item number nine, public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh seven, a short term rental. Special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at nine oh seventy nations, the property owner of record is Mark Offenstein. The parcel ID of the subject property is one one zero five four. Is there anyone, please come to the podium, name, ward, and remember, we can't respond.
My name is Alex Schmidt and my husband and I are here today, uh we're with Ward five, we're in Ward five. And um we are here in relation to this notice of the special use permit. Um we have properties within two hundred feet of this property. We were blindsided by this notice which we received on November uh ninth. Since mid-October, we were, we've been puzzled and bothered by unusual comings and goings, mostly at night. Large trucks, work trucks, all men- manner of vehicles coming in and out of the carport of this uh residence. Large trucks were backing out into the street in order to allow other trucks and vehicles to park behind them. And blinding lights coming into our living room. It was becoming very upsetting for us, too many strange things going on at night in our quiet, previously quiet neighborhood. So we, again, we received this notice on November ninth. I started documenting the online advertising and marketing of nine oh seven East Nation Street on November fourteenth. And I found this house, or actually motel, was advertised on at least four vacation rental websites, including VRBO. And Airbnb, and if you read the regulations of the ordinance number twenty twenty-one. Zero one zero one, which I believe, Mister Stevens, you were uh you signed off on. Um it talks about. Uh not section ninety, uh section ninety dash one two four. An owner who desires to use his premises as a short term rental must have a valid active short term rental permit from the city. Prior to using, allowing the use of, or advertising the use of said premises as a short term rental, and it goes on. Uh next to this, oh, and by the way, on one of the webs, on all the websites, our home. The the edge of our home was actually on the website, which we asked to get taken off and they did. Uh I also documented the comings and goings of motel guests at this address between November fourteenth and November twenty-eighth. Finding twelve nights of occupancy, which included nine different groups of motel occupants. And again, in the city ordinances, uh twenty twenty-one oh one oh one sec, read section ninety dash one two three B. And also section ninety one three six A, which addressed this very clearly. Saying short term rental article of the Alpine City Code prohibits the short term rental of residential premises. Within the city of Alpine without an active short term rental permit for this. Alright, um and our question, we have several questions about this. If a penalty is actually exacted because of this use of this property next door to us. Can a property owner simply pay the penalty fine and fulfill punishment for what it says here could be a misdemeanor? And then can the property owner simply turn around and reapply for the S D R permit and get it?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we have some more things which I hope you all will read. We have more comments, thank you very much and happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Is there anybody else here to speak on item number nine? Okay, so that's going to conclude public hearings at six oh eight. City Secretary, we're moving into consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor, tonight's consent agenda contains seven items, item one, approval of November seventh, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of the appointment of Crystal Baca to the place reposition on the Parks and Recreation Board. Item three, approval of short term, excuse me, special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh three. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at two oh two North Fourth Street. The property owner of record is Carl Brock, the parcel ID of the subject property is one one nine zero six. Item four, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero four. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at one zero zero four West Del Rio Street. The property owner of record is Justin Talent and Colleen West, parcel ID of the subject property is three zero three seven nine. Item five, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero six. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at four oh one East Avenue A. The property owner of record is Richard K Zimmer at X, the parcel ID of the subject property is one one zero nine seven. Item six, approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero seven. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at nine oh seven East Nations. The property owner of record is Mark Offenstein, parcel ID of the subject property is one one zero five four. And item seven, approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve dashes zero one. A resolution approving the amended lease agreement between South Plains Community Action Association. And the city of Alpine for use of the property located at six oh seven West Gallego Avenue, known as the neighborhood center.
Hey, I need a motion.
I'd like to pull number three and four.
Okay, we're going to pull number three and four.
Well said.
Okay, so three and four for Councilmember Nance and six for Councilmember Stokes and Stevens. Alright, we will consider the other ones, which would be one, two. Five and seven. Hey, I need a motion to approve.
Move that we approve. One, two, five, and seven has been.
Okay, I need a second, okay, and all in favor of approving consent agenda items one, two, five, and seven, please raise your right hand. Okay, City Secretary, items one, two, five, and seven passed unanimously. Okay, we're going to consider the others in order, so let's start with item number three, Councilmember Nance.
I guess my question on that one is, there's probably been no material changes with the parking. Um we haven't made any changes to the S T R, so I guess I was going to get counsel's opinion on that, on the approval of that. Or also talking to the city, how long will that take for that ordinance change before these properties? If we change the S T R parking ordinance, how long till that process is ended so that this is, this would fall under legal order?
We go through till February.
Maybe more next year, okay.
So what about the ones that have been approved before? Are they grandfathered in or are they given a certain amount of time to come when come into compliance?
Um we would have to go back and see if any of them were not in compliance with the parking, these were pulled specifically because the parking was called out for being long.
Not all of them are not non.
Any other questions? Okay, let's consider item number three, the approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh three. A short term rental special use permit allowing short terminal to be established at two oh two North Fourth Street, the property owner of record is Carl Broach. The parcel ID of the subject property is one one nine oh six. Hey, all in favor, please raise your right, I need a second. It was, okay, I need a motion. To approve.
I I make a motion again to table until we figure out if we're going to change all this parking. You know, this is a blatant going across, you ought to go, it's very easy to go look at, when I went. I mean, there, it is not a parking place. It'd be like if I tore down part of my fence and pulled in my front yard.
So I would second the table.
I have a question though, is this, is this property, is is it, is it already operating?
It hasn't been permitted, correct?
Not.
Are operating because the reason that they signed up for the permit is because we cited them for.
So I guess table and it's not going to matter, they're still going to operate. Other than the fact that, I mean, I know what we're waiting for, but if they're still going to probably operate.
And this is not a one bedroom property, is it?
No.
No.
So this would require.
So I I think it's two bedrooms plus that have to have three spots, yeah.
Please let me remind the members in the audience to remain quiet. Hey, any other?
So do we have any, any alternative action that we can take as far as them not operating until they're in compliance?
They would go through our court system and they have been cited for operating. I'm not aware of any other legal action that we.
So just to get some clarification, um you know, when you table the item procedurally, it would come back at the next meeting for Robert's rule. Uh just want to let you know, we'll have to reset the notices, which is fine, it's just, you know, the ordinance won't be passed the next meeting either. So I don't know if you wanted to rather postpone it until the ordinance is passed, maybe that'd be better.
Then I'll amend my motion and let's postpone it.
Okay, alright, so we have a motion and a second to postpone this um approval. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, City Secretary, it passes unanimously to postpone the approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh three. A short term rental special use permit allowing a short terminal to be established at two oh two North Fourth Street. Alright, Councilmember Nance, item number four.
Exact same issue, there's probably been no material changes from last time when we tabled this. So I'm just going to get counsel's opinion on this one as well. This one is listed as uh you look on Zillow is a three bed, two bath, but from the documents, we have a two bedroom with an office. And I think they have a two car garage, so currently with the five hundred, the current ordinance with the five hundred uh comment date, it would not, I think. Fall under regulation.
Either way, it wouldn't, if it's listed as three bedrooms, then it has to be four spots.
And that becomes the fun game of, is it a bedroom or an office, like when we, you know.
Was that a problem with them to fill out something, telling us it's an office and then put online it's a bedroom? That's a whole different world. In my book, if I'm getting a two bedroom with the office, I think there's a desk, if I'm getting a three bedroom, there better be three rooms. And you're going to get more money.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know.
So I would move we postpone this as well unless someone already, do you want to make that there?
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone, we have a second to postpone, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, City Secretary, it passes unanimously to postpone approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Dash oh four, a short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at one zero zero four West Del Rio Street. Okay, so. Item number six, Councilmember Stevens and Stokes.
So it, it's in my ward, is it Ward five?
There you go.
Yeah, and and so I spent some time. Alex and Silver looking at the property, actually drove by, what was going on, looked at, I actually looked at the listings. It is being rented right now, uh there's no question about it, uh and I have a hard time approving. A, to to their point, I have a hard time approving, it's, uh I'm not sure what motion they could not move. Because at this point, I wouldn't propose appro- approval, and you can't, according to Robert's rules of order, I think I can't propose. Uh I I'm not sure what my proposal would look like. I can't propose negative, so.
If they've been cited.
No, we have, we, we really haven't uh shifted our focus, if they're trying to become compliant, we usually don't cite them.
Okay.
We shift our focus to people who are actively trying.
They understand that we have to prove that before they can put people in beds, is that right? Am I right?
Well, they should.
But I think the majority of our people have gone ahead and done it, and didn't we take the stance that we were going to give them time?
We're going to allow them to become non, or to to come to.
To become compliant, so we need to decide whether we're going to continue with that and let the people know, you know, no, you can't until you get it or.
If that's the direction council wants to go, you can just let us know and we'll be happy to start focusing on these properties a little bit.
But the one guy's already been cited on his for doing it without them.
He was not in the process of getting.
Got it, okay.
But what we know, we just went through one that is already advertising. Came to us for a two bedroom, is actually listing as a three bedroom, that's not compliance. We know this case, they're already out and they came forward, uh they're not compliant.
They come forward before they rented it?
They've already rented it.
They came forward after they rented.
After they rented.
What stance have we given? These people on that issue though.
We have made it where if we approach them, they approach us, we try to get them compliant. We don't cite them until we give them the opportunity, if they fail to fill out the application or to move forward with it. Then we do go through the citation process, or if they were in compliance but failed to renew. Then we will cite them um because they are aware of their.
So you're, in your opinion, was that giving them an okay kind of nonverbal to go ahead and operate without? While they're in the process. Isn't that what?
Not a verbal, yes, you can continue to operate, it's you need to become compliant before you really move forward with it.
If we move this into properties that didn't renew their permit, but continue to rent when they don't have a permit. They've not been cited either, I'm assuming. I'm assuming if they didn't get a city permit, because they have to get an annual one or one every two years. Then if they did not get a permit, which we have one in here as well, we just heard, then. They, I'm assuming, don't say, I forgot to get my permit, guys, so I got to hold business for a while, they probably continue to rent.
That's why I think we need to get a little bit more strict on what we're expecting from them. Because I think we've given the idea that.
A little bit more clear, yeah.
We've given them the idea that kind of.
Well, it's too late for this one now, so you know, I don't know that we have a choice with this.
Well, that, so that that is, one of the questions is what choices do we have? I don't think we know. Well, that, so that, that is, one of the questions is what choices do we have? I don't think we know.
I think until we're more clear. I mean, we've kind of given the impression that it's okay, as long as you all are in the process of doing this, we're going to to be lenient and work with you to get you compliant, to get you to where you need to be. We just, we're pushing for them to come forward and, and, and apply.
We've been very nice for the past several years. Um, I do have a list of questions, um, to sit down with legal counsel in regards to ordinance itself. Um, some of the questions that have been brought up by the public, some of the questions that have been brought up by you. Um, in regards to short term rentals and we do have to take into consideration the legislation that did pass. What we can and can't regulate, um, at our level, um, compared to the state level. But the state is also cracking down as well. I mean, they want their piece of the pie. Um, so I think counsel, whatever decision you make tonight, I think once we get some legal backing on how strict can we be? How do we enforce? What is our legal recourse through our courts? Um, we put that into practice and play because like you just mentioned, you know, this is in comparison to this individual who you know, we, we have this leniency process right now to get people compliant. If we want to be stricter, then we need to make sure we, we definitely sit down with legal counsel and lay out the, the rules.
So my point is I would treat it no different than four. I postponed. They're doing it anyway. We need to advise the council about what our approach is. Uh, but I don't think we want to put ourselves in position of approving without understanding what our options are. Uh, which is what we just did with, with a lot of them.
So your motion is?
To postpone.
I need a second, so. Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, City Secretary, it passes unanimously to table the approval of special use permit. Postpone, yes, postpone, that's an important word. Uh, the approval of special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh seven, a short term rental special use permit allowing a short term rental to be established at nine oh seven East Nations.
And presuming there's going to be a follow up at the January second meeting on this topic.
Yes, I actually have it in the first, the first meeting in January and right now I've got seven legal questions asked, including addressing penalties.
Okay, all right, Chief, so yeah.
So knowing now some of these, uh, rent, short term rentals are working out, I know for a fact that some of them will cancel, once they make reservations on someone, they'll have the person cancel the reservations and then have to pay the money under, under the, under the table. I think the best way to handle it is to find legal counsel and start going after these civilly. Uh, because we're not going to get anything done with our courts and, uh, that's, that's my only advice for y'all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so we are finished with the consent agenda. We're coming up on an hour and I think we're going to have a lively discussion section, so I'm going to give us a ten minute break. Concession. All right, so information or discussion items. Please read item number one and give your report, Councilmember Stokes.
The county lays on Commissioner's court report, um, right off the bat, Ruben Ortega was there, he was in absent. Uh, they brought their new bomb dog, dog in, her name is Dory. So, um, he's very high strung and I guess that's good if you're going to go look for bombs and and they already had a, some kind of a suitcase at the tax office that some guy left. But they got him on camera, there wasn't anything in it. But he just wanted to give them those papers, whatever. Uh, they are rehiring their auditor that just retired. And Melinda Richardson to bring all their current, their audits current. They're right now like two and a half, three years behind on their audit. Hmm, um, so we're in good shape.
Yes, we are.
They've got new trucks and they're losing away money. But other than that, though, those were the two things that stood out to me.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I was just going to see if Megan would talk about the tilt funds. Explain to the crowd what tilt funds are.
So.
Interesting.
And what that acronym stands for.
So. Payment in lieu of taxes. Um, the county, um, is very lucky and fortunate. The Department of Interior provides the county a payment in lieu of taxes for the Big Ben National Park. So because they do take up a large portion of the county and that's obviously tax exempt property. The Department of Interior has an agreement that they provide certain national parks, um, a payment in lieu of taxes. And so I believe the county gets about one three, one point three million for that portion of the, of the property.
Well, and I didn't talk about, they, they're giving Tlinga, uh, Common School District sixty-five thousand out of that field and San Porcinity School District a hundred and thirty, and that's where that money comes from.
Yeah, so they do.
Really helps those school districts down there.
Yeah, um, and it, it's not always a guarantee. Um, prior history, the county did actually not receive a pilt, um, for two years in a row. Um, it really is one of those budgeted by the, the federal government. Um, but it is a large, uh, portion of the county's budget for their property tax.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all right, thank you, Councilmember Stokes.
Um, presentation by Andrew Delany, building official regarding zoning changes within residential zones. Um, he gave this presentation at P and C. Whatever that was last, whatever.
Monday.
And I, I asked that he come in and, and re give it so that everybody could hear. Give his opinion.
Yes.
Thanks, Andrew.
Yes, ma'am. No, thank you for being here. Good evening, kind of wrote it. Keep it short and sweet as I can, but kind of wrote some stuff down in regards to what we talked about at the P and Z. Um, want to, again, thank y'all for y'all's time and what, what y'all do for the city. I'm speaking with you today to discuss the zoning within the city of Alpine, specifically the C zero district. Uh, it's not used in a lot of cities, so this is somewhat new. But, um, do I think there's a problem here in Alpine? Yes. Uh, with the lack of a comprehensive plan and a ten year old zoning map, you know, fortunately the Planning and Zoning Commission and us, we're not equipped to make the fully best informed decision that we can make for the future growth development. Uh, while you may ask, we've been working hard to update the current zoning map, which is a decade old. Um, and we've had multiple illegal spot zoning issues around town and the ordinances are outdated, which is something Jessica, myself, Megan, have all been trying to work on, get that done as expedient as possible. Needless to say, we've got a work cut out for us, but it's a job we're here to do and we want growth for Alpha. Our department, along with the Planning and Zoning Commission, are working on fixing or updating more so what's missing from the ordinances that could really help us make the best decisions for the future growth.
Councilmember Roger. Well, you, before we get into further, I just wanted you to explain to them about, uh, spot zoning. About, you know, you mentioned that it's illegal, just so that they'll know.
Yes, and that's going back to how residential zones are deemed one, two, three and four, are one, two, three and four. Commercial is C one, C one A, C two, B three is C four, and we have a M one district, manufacturing district. Spot zoning is considered legal if it's not contiguous to any other adjacent properties within the same residential commercial. For example, if we're in Carpenter Edition, can just throw a M one with that because it's not touching another M one property. You can only build on what was already zoned there, whether it be residential or commercial.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And again, our, our department, we're trying to work on fixing all what helps us within the city of Alpine. We're planning the zoning, well as ourself and ordinances. Um, you know, we're trying to protect the citizens. The comprehensive growth plan, like I stated earlier, we don't have one. This first city I've seen that we don't have one. We're working on one. Megan's been wonderful trying to get that. It's just small town. It, it is what it is at this point. To simplify the concept, we take the current zoning map and copy it and edit the future vision of Alpine to make it the best, the most educated decision for the city, for what we do, planning and zoning, you as members of city council. With that being said, I know Building Services staff and I want what's best for the city of Alpine. We dedicate ourselves to improving the overall life health and safety for all citizens and visitors, and we put into action what our ordinance state currently. We also see and hear the issues that we face. Citizens complaints, things not matching, disapprovals, we hear all that. We're our true boots on the ground for growth for Alpha. I'm speaking here today to concentrate mainly on the C zero commercial zone. Again, that's not one a lot of citizens see. C zero zoning activity is characterized by relatively low daily volume of direct customer contact. As written in our city of Alpine code and ordinances, the purpose of this specific zone is to permit those businesses and prof- the purpose of this specific zone is to permit those businesses and professional services that serve primarily the residential areas or adjacent retail and commercial establishments. We call this the buffer zone. In between your major high-density commercial and your residential zones. Placed correctly, we can create a beautiful city. It is underused currently and should be considered more between residential and the higher-density commercial zoning now and in the comprehensive plan. We want to preserve the residential zone and keep it residential and encourage the growth of commercial activity along the thoroughfare as well. This would be for all of Alpine, including the major three highways, Highway 90, 67, and 118. Commercial thoroughfare, if you look at the map. C zero is designed to permit the allowed use while providing protections to adjacent residential development. If a C zero district is owned in a certain residential district, the residents in that area should be more comfortable knowing that bigger businesses such as restaurants, retail stores, dollar stores, gas stations would not be allowed in that C zero district. Even though it's on commercial, while providing smaller business services that would be beneficial to that specific neighborhood. Some nearby residents might even value the opportunity of having some commercial, just because it could be a short walking distance to that piece of property or a short driving distance, so you're not crossing the tracks or whatever your business may be. An alternative to residential property rezoning to commercial could potentially be the use of a conditional use permit, which is stated in our code and ordinances. For small businesses wanting to utilize the C zero district, excuse me, within its specific criteria, it is, in my opinion, a better option than regulating the land use according to a conditional use permit. Meaning, I would, in my professional opinion, I would support C zero rather than a conditional use permit, excuse me. One of the main reasons I prefer rezoning over a conditional use permit is the very specific criteria C zero must meet. And the C zero was created for a reason, and it should be applied as needed. Second, the conditional use permit invites a slippery slope, if you will, of what would be allowable with the use of a conditional permit. There's multiple small businesses we probably haven't even heard of. Technology these days in age, it could be a one-table massage or spa, one-car mechanic. There's so many different variables at the way our conditional use permit is written that we would just have to acclimate to all multiple types of businesses. A C zero would negate that due to very specific requirements, providing that buffer within the residential commercial. You can see the issue will essentially ruin the residential zone and possibly kill the commercial zones as everyone can have a business at home. That's in regards to the approval of conditional use permits. If we open specific types of businesses available to be removed from exclusions within the residential zoning districts, the city could potentially be forced to amend its ordinances multiple times in the future to allow more types of small businesses to be open within a residential zone. In my opinion, again, CO is absolutely vital to the growth of Alpine while being the buffer as intended between high-density commercial residential properties. There are good reasons for local government to allow neighborhood commercial zone, but accomplishing this goal is not easy, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Before you leave, does anybody have any questions for Andrew?
I have one question. When we look at CUPs and stuff going from R1, R2, R3, does that blow down? Because when you look at the actual zoning ordinance, it'll say R2 will accept everything from R1. Is it everything, or is it just?
It does move down, it does, the asterisks on the bottom do move down, all with the exception of the R3 apartment district. R4, R3, R2, and R1 can have all 1, 2 on that, but apartment district would not be allowed in the R4, R2, or R1, same as R4 mobile home district.
So accepting a CUP in R1 would automatically accept that into an R2? So accepting a conditional use permit into an R1, which is the amendment we're looking at tonight, I believe, would automatically allow that also in R2?
In R2 and down, correct.
Would that include an R4 or no?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, sir.
But not an R3 apartment?
No, R3 for specific apartments would not be able to be utilized in R2 or R1, same as R4, but the exclusions for, that are in R1 would be allowed down all the way to R4.
All the way down, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments for Drew? Hey, thank you, Drew. Okay, Mr. Fielder, yes, please come to the podium, state your name and ward, once again, please.
My name is Guy Fielder, Ward 5. I just want to understand, once you have allowed this the first time, have you not established the precedent that you're gonna have to continue forward with this precedent? I mean, the old expression is, once the gate's open, you can't close it. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, let's move on to the next discussion item, Councilmember Stokes.
Discuss the proposed parking changes to the short-term rental ordinance. Once again, I went to the PNC meeting and this is where all this got brought up, of so many beds and so many parking places and all that. And I really do think that we need to seriously look at these ordinances, that's why we're postponing all these other ones. And, and parts of the reason, and you can't, you can't have a short-term rental with people in their yards. I mean, parking in the yard, I don't like it, I don't wanna look at it across the street from me. These people, number one, are tired of the short-term rentals, right off the bat, and then everybody's gonna park in the yard. It's just not gonna set well, and it doesn't set well with me. I know it doesn't with everybody else, and I know we've been told we have to prove everything. They don't have to park upon the grass and the sidewalks, that's my personal opinion. So that's my discussion, that's all I want to say.
So, so Andrew is here because he is working on making modifications to the ordinance. And because parking has become a question, not only with short-term rentals, but you know, what we have for our basic parking ordinance for even within the residential. So Andrew's here, if you did have additional questions, I wanted to know the direction in which we were trying to move.
Tell us which direction we're trying to move.
Just trying to maintain consistency, if you were to build a new house here per ordinance right now, you only need one off-street parking minimum, which is kinda crazy, in my opinion. But once that house goes to a short-term rental per our current ordinance, you have to do one parking spot per bedroom plus 500 square feet of common area. So it's just the cohesion, we're, our ordinances outdated, they're not matching up. Same, I know y'all had a couple of issues with some of the ones that we had spoken in earlier, whether they do advertise as a two-bedroom, three-bedroom, very valid concerns on that. And you know, we've seen some parking on that, had some concerns ourself, but they're just one spot off. So I'd like to actually communicate the same R1 with the STRs, because it blows down to all our 1, 2, 3, and 4, with the exception of apartment homes, those are engineered.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
In my view, one of the issues with short-term rentals, they do fill up parking spaces on the street. In my view, there needs to be, for either a parking space, that's different than our residential, I think.
If I'm not mistaken, on our current packet now, Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's how the line-out, strike-out is written right now.
I agree, but that's different than what you said, that's why.
No, I just want cohesion, whatever, whatever it may be.
I'm lined up with the way you've got it written right now, okay? And so what I think I heard you say, though, is that you'd have to have more parking spaces for a new-built residential property, so if they had three bedrooms, then have to have three parking spaces.
If that's the plan, y'all.
I understand, so I'm talking to the short-term rental stuff. I do think there's probably a difference between the two. You know, most houses, you know, two-car garage is plenty, even if you've got three or four bedrooms. But for short-term rentals, I get consistent feedback from the residents of Ward 5.
You're getting overall percentage of more cars and.
More cars, and so you at least gotta have a parking space per bedroom.
Per bedroom, which we can continue on with our process that's in the packet to keep that.
What else written right now?
That's what's written right now, yeah, so I'm okay with what it's written.
Okay.
On the residential side, but I don't think it's an appropriate burden. People who live there, it's the ones that are showing up and then taking off.
Then we'll, we'll proceed as written.
Thank you.
Do we have anything written in there to cover guests that they might have? I mean, I know, say, it needs some parking.
Rentals are permanent residents.
Short-term rentals, so do we have anything that, that can limit the amount of people that they have over?
Well, currently, we do put an occupancy limit on the permits, based on the, what is it, square footage?
Square, uh, number of beds.
Yeah, but they come in and they're here for graduation or something, and they rent an STR, and then at the end, they have all these people come over there, there's nothing that.
Well, the occupancy limit on the, on the permit, again, correct me.
Yeah, no, that's the correct occupancy limit that we do, we do it per bed, per bedroom, any common areas that have sleeper sofas. We count all that into the occupancy of that STR. Now, whether they do come in on a weekend and they have more there, unfortunately, that's probably gonna be a police department matter, rather than.
It would be really hard to regulate.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to regulate it, I remember.
So if they're here for graduation and everyone has their own STR, but they need at one to have a big party, there's not a way to truly regulate that, except for if they start violating the noise ordinance, if they start violating.
Technically, there is, it wouldn't, right?
Yeah, we do have an occupancy limit that we do adhere to, and it is posted on their short-term rental.
So we have a day where call and say, hey, I'm having people park in front of my house and all that. They do have something that they can call in and have the cars moved or.
Just lines up a lot of driveways, or alleys. But the proposed ordinance in the packet does say that the motor vehicles of all occupants of the short-term rental property shall be parked only on the permitted and approved driveway of the short-term rental property. So, I mean, it would give a mechanism.
We did include that to make sure they're not parking on the grass or any other impervious material, appropriate, sorry.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I have one in here that it did say, so it looks like if you had a three-bedroom, this going back to the one property we kinda discussed earlier. Most three-bedroom houses are gonna have a two-car garage or two-car carport. That's kinda the way just houses are built, so we would be requiring three spots for a three-bedroom house. Otherwise, we'll play the game that that's not a bedroom, that's an office or something else like that. I feel like we're, the language we're using here, and also that it said you can't park in the public right-of-way, which would be the street, I'm guessing. So we're requiring them to have a three-car carport for a three-bedroom house. So the way we're constructing the language is we're saying, alright, guys, here's a square hole, or here's a round hole, here, hit your square peg in it. I would rather work with the property owners to say, the custom way that homes are built, three-bedroom, two-carport, that's what we kinda structure as, so that people don't gotta jump, pretzel themselves into these kinds of things. So I'll probably disagree on that, or council just comes out and says, we're using this as a legal mechanism to constrict the amount of STR permits that we're issuing out. I mean, because that's what we would be doing.
Well, no, but didn't the use of the home change, when you, when you changed it from a residence to a business, though?
As far as they're making money now, or?
Well, not just that, but there's more people involved and stuff like that. Chances are in a three-bedroom home that's a residential, all three of them are adults that are driving a vehicle. So, I mean, it kinda, it changed on the property.
But I guess there's a hubris, I feel like, from our perspective, saying like, okay, most three-bedroom homes have the father with a car, second partner with a car, maybe a kid with a car or something else. And we're saying, the majority of people that come into town, we know they're gonna be bringing in three cars. There may be two people getting a house, and then with one car, or two people from separate areas of Texas coming in and meeting, or three cars. Maybe it's a, you know, we don't know anything, it's a hubris for us to kinda step these laws up and kinda define what it is. So to me, it's a legal maneuver to kinda restrict if we did want to slow down the process of creating these permits for it. But otherwise, I would rather work towards the property owners to kinda open that up. That's just my own opinion on that.
I get your point, my struggle is, I consistently get feedback about people are blocking driveways, filling up more spots. I've got one down the street from me, good friends, they've had eight cars there, and they filled that house up, and I get that. All of their spots, though, are on their property, I can't argue with that. If someone wants to go have a rental place and I get told they're quote-unquote putting a hotel in, put another parking spot on the property, we'll pay for that, because I don't think it's fair to the residents who do live there, who are not renting it out, to lose a parking spot to someone else who's now bringing in a bigger group. And that's why I'd like to say, you got three bedrooms, put a extra space on your property. I think that's what we're trying to get, so that residents who live there can truly use the public. Because the others, they're in for the weekend and they're out of here.
And then, I guess I would ask on that, if somebody blocks a driveway, is that sightable?
Yes, of course it is.
Okay, so that's, that's a separate legal thing right there, so we're arguing about the number of spots in the public area of the road.
I think that's the issue, yeah, and we know there's not enough.
I think what we're seeing is, these short-term rentals are being put in residential places that weren't meant to have 15 cars in them, that's the biggest problem. They weren't made to park, you know, the, I know that one that Rick and I both have gone, I mean, they're going through a yard to get to another yard, you know, it's not, that's not right. Just so you can make some more money, I know it's your property and by law you can do what you want, but we can control it, you're going through somebody else's yard. I mean, we should be able to go, no, we have an ordinance that says you have to provide those places. And that grass is, to me, is not a parking spot.
Councilmember Sandadde.
A bunch of those got parking, but they're on city right-of-way, I noticed that they park by the fence, which is in city right-of-way.
Well, that's the other part you're gonna have a dilemma with, is even though there's parking spaces, sometimes it's easier to park on the street than to go behind the house and that doesn't need a parking spot, because people still wanna do it, they wanna park right there in the front. And these are all issues that we're trying to address.
Where the owners would park as well. Whether you're an STR renter or an owner, human behavior's gonna direct what your decision is.
Any other questions, comments? Guy Fielder, come up, please. It's okay. And once again, name and ward.
Guy Fielder, Ward 5, so we talked about new construction, new construction, I believe, has got a front setback that is 30 feet?
25.
25, so you will typically have, man, so this is the house. This is the property, so most new constructions are gonna have a two-car garage, and they're gonna have a driveway where two more cars can park without blocking the sidewalk. So that's the first point of clarity I wanna make. The second one is, I have a house that was built when the horses and the carriage was down at the end of the street at the stables. So there, it was never built with a carriage house or a garage or even a driveway. And we have a lot of these old houses in Alpine, so this may be another way we could control Airbnbs. If the house is older than a certain, mine's, I think, 115 years old at this point. If the house was never built with parking, then it can't be an Airbnb. So just, just throwing out some thoughts, spitwats.
What is it called, spitwating?
Spitballing, so again, thank you very much.
Love all that tech.
Thank you, Andrew, everybody's done.
Thanks, Andrew.
Okay, let's move on then to information or discussion, item number four, Councilmember Stevens.
Thanks very much, and I just put this on, we have our boards and commissions, we all said we'd asked them for goals and objectives. We haven't seen them, at least since I've been on council since May, probably worthwhile, we kinda share them all. I can tell you the ones we put together for the hot committee, if we can ever get core for a meeting. We have four of them, discuss the sources of economic and visitor data reports, looking at data, how we gather that. Megan's been working that with help, we're working the county as well. Finance overview, projected revenue expenses, fund balance, examine our possible areas of strategic action by the committee, and discuss conflict advantage policy, I think these are all items of interest to council, we're gonna go off to work.
I'm not asking for all of us to share right now, but I think maybe in a January, February meeting, we'll come back and see where we're at. And we probably don't want to put that on a, we think on an annual calendar, kind of like the June timeframe. That we do want to take a look at. Because that way we'll up the speed and we know what's going on for the year.
Okay, well, Council.
We all on the board.
We are, and thank y'all for attending the one that I couldn't attend. And our planning and zoning chair is here this evening, so Mr. Walter, if you would step up and tell us a little bit about the work that y'all have done, because we tasked them as a council. We tasked them last year with
Yeah.
The zoning map.
So if they're so, do all the boards and commissions have goals?
They do. We council came up with the goals.
Display them.
So I actually sent an email that has all of the different boards and commissions and their tasks. Um, and you sent us.
I I sent the email with the hope that one of you would take it and run with it. Thank you, Rick.
So last October in twenty two, we actually tasked all of the boards and commissions um with a variety of items, primarily updating. The key thing to every single one of them was to update something. Um specifically ordinances, um parks had events, um planning and zoning had uh zoning ordinances in the zoning map. Um so each one has steadily progressed in doing their things, but I also made the comment within my email with we asked them really large tasks.
Yes, we did.
And expected them to finish within a year, but also with the, well, when they don't meet a forum, it pushes them even further behind. And so I I'm going to speak on behalf of Matt and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Matt took one of the tasks and he got all of the information for all of the zones. And so I did update council this week. He he went through all the minutes and he found every time the council made a decision to rezone.
From twenty thirteen.
From twenty thirteen to now.
That was a lot of work.
It wasn't wasted because I took his research and I gave it to the Rio Grande Council of Governments. And they've actually updated our map. And so we're missing six properties currently that we just could not figure out the description. So we have um Alex, who's our records clerk, pulling the actual council packets to find the more specifics to be able to put it on the map. So the project's actually almost completed, but along the way we found mistakes. So when we task them moving forward, I really want us to be considerate with we want you to update chapter one of the ordinance, not, we want you to update the ordinance so that they aren't overly overwhelmed with, you know, the zoning ordinances are huge. It's a huge impact on the city. But we have issues with our zoning. We've discussed it. We've come across it. We want to prosper. We want to grow. We want to encourage. We want all this. But we restricted ourselves with our ordinances, whereas when planning and zoning looks at it, they want to do the best interest for the city now in the future. And it's really hard because you're looking at your ordinances as, well, if we change this, do we? So every board has been tasked and every board has completed a good portion of it. There's just so much to look at for this upcoming year, if you want to redefine it a little bit, to make them a little bit easier to complete.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens.
I would just like at each board meeting, because of planning and zoning, Judy, Darren and I were there.
Yes, thank y'all.
At each meeting, just walk through, here's the goals and objectives. It ought to be a standard agenda item on every board and commission. And that meets the need because now we know they're working on it. And it wasn't on the last P and Z meeting, and that's not a fault or anything. It's just be nice to see so we can keep track of that.
And it has been on P and Z agendas before, correct?
Quite, quite a few.
Yeah.
A year, I stopped adding.
Yes, yes, because I'm the council member for P and Z and I wasn't able to attend on the twenty seventh, so I appreciate you guys filming. I did watch the video, which was quite lengthy. Alright, so Councils. Commissioner Walter, would you like to explain what you did? Let's give him some time because he did a lot of work.
I'm planning and zoning. We were charged, Megan charged us with trying to come up with a an updated map of the zones in Alpine. And the map had not been updated since twenty thirteen. So what that involved was going through the city minutes and going through, you had to start chronology all the way back in twenty thirteen. And read the city minutes and look at the actions and look at the approvals and then write down the zoning changes. Mostly zoning changes. There were a few things, like in twenty thirteen, we approved the new zoning map. That was the last time we approved a map. Uh and then we had to note all the different changes. Uh there were, we came up with forty two. Forty two changes to the plant, to the zoning map over that ten year period. So wrote down every one of them with the numbers so the folder could be pulled. And so we could then send that to the Rio Grande City Council and we're going to get an updated map. And that way we can go look at the map and see what we were supposed to do. So it was interesting doing that. Reading all the city minutes for ten years worth of them where it was uh was uh. I'm wearing glasses now. I didn't do. But it was interesting to see what we did uh what what the city had done. From residential to commercial was the largest change that we approved. We approved eight residential to commercial changes. Uh where those are, I'm curious to see the map too. So until we get the map, it's hard to tell. We did approve six commercial to residential. Uh not sure what those involve. We did approve a couple of commercial to industrial. Uh and we approved, there were, most of them were actually not changes. Residential R one to R two or R two to R three, that sort of thing. So we approved a bunch of those. Or or somebody, the city, the city approved those. So it's going to be interesting to see when the when the map comes out. Basically, this is what I sent Geo. This is all the zoning changes for ten years worth. And that's what's going to be end up being made up into a map. And that's what planning and zoning worked on. Uh, yep.
Mr. Stevens, how would first go ahead?
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
So do we have, did we put a procedure in place to make sure that this doesn't happen? After every ordinance, is some someone going to be updating?
Yeah, there we go.
So actually, um because uh the partnership with the COG, um Casey Matory has been wonderful. And she wants to be actively involved. And so when I told her what my in game was in the project, she wants to update it every time we make a change.
Because it can be done digitally now. That's the great thing. It can be done digitally.
So Casey works for the Rio Grande Council of Governments. She's their G I S coordinator, but she's also their nine one one. So if you ever need a nine one one address, she's your contact person. Um she's actually really enjoyed it and I got to spend about two hours with her last week. Um we have the floodplain updated. We have the zoning updated. We have the annexation updated. And she's done a parcel map for the city so that I can highlight all the city properties. So she's really eager. She has the data. It was just us giving her the, what was the change? Um there was only six that she really couldn't figure out what exactly was going on. And so like I said, we're pulling that. So great job with with what Matt has done. And like I said, we took it and moving forward, every time a change gets made, she'll get the information and it will be updated.
And I think the other thing that's going to be great, these maps will be digital. You'll be able to put it on your screen, your computer screen or the TV and zoom in.
So she's doing, I've asked her to do a layer map. So what I in product one is a book. And it would have the Mylar type paper where if you wanted to look at just R twos, you'd have R twos and then you'd have that overlay for R threes and an overlay for R fours. So you ideally would get all of them together, but then you could see the individual layers. So when someone said, what's all your residential? You could see just the residential. Um kind of a fun thing for me because I'm a little bit nerdy, but I just thought it would be cool and she's willing to do it and help us.
Yeah, thank.
And we could update it every month.
That's good. Alright, any other questions, comments?
So just to make sure, uh she also, we updated them.
That's what we did last time and um you know, so the new objectives would have started over in October timeframe. We can change it. I'm just saying that's why I stopped that.
I like the June idea, one, to finish off what they started that we gave them these big projects and two, it kind of goes into like when we're redoing the budget and stuff like that to get into October. That if there's some of these tasks that need some additional funding, we're prepared for it. We tasked the parks board with the signs.
Yep.
Well, I had to make sure this year we had the money in the budget so that when we have to review all the signs, we're not, where's it going to come from? So I think the June is actually really.
Good.
Okay, Councilmember Sanda.
No question.
Okay, next.
The only one I wonder about is for property owners. Now that the flood zone will be updated, is that going to affect insurance rates and how does that actually happen for owners?
So the flood map has been provided. It's in an internal use currently. Um the state actually went and updated all of their floodplain stuff um with the Water Development Board. So we have a digital file of it. So she overlaid the the new flooding. Um it will affect some of our insurance um people. Um some may now be in the flood zone and some may now not be in the flood zone. We're still working on how useful this map is going to be. Um I know from the city perspective, we needed, especially when we got for certain grants, um example, the generator grant, they're asking literally for someone to sign off on our flood. Um but it's also for new construction. Um this may affect like Skyway Gardens with their new project with being in the flood zone and not being in the flood zone. Um so we haven't really officially looked and played with it to see the full impact from the older one. Um but there has been some significant changes. I need to get back with Casey. Um right now, we're just using it internally. Um a council can officially approve the floodplain map. Um but I would like it in to coincide with the county. Um because that doesn't obviously affect the town.
So you might just put that on the agenda, so we know what it's going to bother that. Because I'm I'm sure people listening tonight are going to say, oh, floodplain map's been updated, insurance impact.
I'm immediately thinking that too.
We're talking tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands.
And it it's beautiful because it's an overlay to that G I S system. So it's not just here's your map. It's, this is what it looks like with all of your parcels.
Yep.
Good deal.
That's a big deal.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you for your time. Honestly, a lot of work and I appreciate it.
I'm blind now.
Yeah. He counts we were stoked. And he's right, he used to not wear glasses. I knew him pre glasses.
It wasn't, I'm sure an absolute lot of work. So we're all anxious to see your little map.
Okay.
Well, thank all of y'all for all your hard work.
You stay right there. You may have a question for you. I don't know who it's for. Just state your name and word, please.
Um I have a question, Matt. The zoning that was changed from residential to commercial because they were going to put a business in there and that never happened. So at what point do you change it back to residential? Because we did the change to accommodate that individual that was going to put in a commercial instant property or whatever in there. And Council Stevens, correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't council be, is the only one that can amend and put together ordinances? And resolutions?
Yeah.
Okay.
But once an ordinance, once a zone has changed, it's changed.
Okay.
It's another action to change that zone.
Right, because P and Z makes recommendations to council. You know, there's not an actual approval of that. So just so that everyone's on the same page. But again, there's got to be a plan where you can change what was existing as residential back from commercial back to what it originally was because it never happened.
Okay, alright, any others?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Any other discussion on discussion item number, what is that, four?
It's a good discussion.
Yeah, what? Alright, so we're going to move on to action items. Hey, the first action item, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash twelve dot zero one. An ordinance approving rezone application twenty twenty three dash ten dash zero one dash eight. Amending the official zoning map of the city by rezoning the property located at four oh one West Soul Ross and legally described as the east eighteen point eight nine feet of lots eight, nine, ten, all of lots one, two and three. And that portion of the platted alley lying between said lots, all out of block twenty eight, original town site of Alpine, envelope one eighty four. Flat records of Brewster County, Texas from R two, two family district to C zero office service district. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended denial of the zoning change.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move to approve the zoning change, Davis Nation, for four oh one West Soul Ross from R two Family District to C O Office Services District. And I move the council make a finding that C O Office Services District is a less intensive and more appropriate zoning district than the applied for C two business district.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. City manager, you want to start us out?
Where do I start? Um so, um as council and most of the public is aware, this item came before council originally to go from an R two to a C two to a commercial district. Um planning and zoning did discuss it and did not move forward with the recommendation to approve it. During discussions um with council at the time, it was pointed out that there were other options, specifically the Z zero, which would allow, as Mr. Devaney had pointed out, the buffer zone. This is an excessive. Except, ah, sorry, it's been a long day. Um this is a a change that is less intrusive, if I use those words. Um on behalf of the resident um and the commercial side, um it's been back and forth. Um council did agree to send it back to planning and zoning to let them reevaluate the other options. Um it has now come back before council. They are also um not in favor of changing it from an R two to a Z zero. Um this would be an in-depth discussion with you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Um, I think this can only be discussed so many times, so I don't, I don't think we should sit for hours and be in a dead horse. Um I sat through the planning zone. I I understand the concerns that the residents have. Uh it was mentioned at that point, you've got to win, win, lose. I think it was said with the understanding that Terry would lose and I have another different opinion. I I just am. I don't think, I think Andrew told us, we keep, we keep doing special uses in R ones. They're going to have plumbers in in residence. He said you could have all of carpenter addition and they could all have little businesses. This is already by commercial buildings. You can't tell me Legion isn't going to, doesn't have more cars than Terry is going to have sitting over there. This is my opinion and I'm giving it because I'm up here. And that is my opinion of the whole thing. I think it's a fine, I I I trust Andrew. This is what we've hired him to do. It's give us his opinion and he has, and I'm going to take it. And that's, that's my thought.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Although I do appreciate the fact that Andrew has come up with what he calls a buffer zone. I feel that we still have to take the other residents into account. When they bought their homes, there there was no wish of having having commercial property next to them or they would have purchased next to a a commercial property. Uh I think that they their voices need to be heard and I continue to side with the property owners.
Okay, Councilmember Nancy.
This one, I I was kind of thinking comparing the zone to the conditional use permit, how Devaney said that that rolls down from R one down to R four. So I think that is important, but what I think's actually more important than that is a lot of what Matt just said, how we don't have an up to date zoning map. He said there's forty two changes to the map that we're not sure of. Eight residentials to commercials. So there's eight resident, there's eight commercial properties out there that are probably listed on our current map as that were residential that are now uh commercial. Those can now be based off our uh ordinance, I believe. If it's continuous, then it could be a commercial. So we really don't know what we don't know. When we actually talk about a conditional use permit, we could be affecting a dramatic number of properties from R one to R four with zonings on the zoning map that aren't even up to date, that we're unsure what they are. Thank you to Matt for for working on this because this is very important work. Um I just feel like moving with the C zero, we've already discussed a lot of this. We know we're working really with seven property owners as opposed to everyone. And when we actually talk about public feedback and a lot of it as well, um I kind of come from the viewpoint, we've had a lot of public feedback on the C zero property and Devon property over there and everything else like that that they're working towards, but we had zero feedback on um can opening up conditional use permits citywide for barber shops. I could tell you, no one has written me an email saying that they want a barber shop in a residential area or anything else like that. Um so I've had zero feedback from that perspective. So I feel like it's a much more stable option from the city's perspective to maybe just go with R two to a C zero as opposed to open the volatility of not knowing what we do know with conditional use permits.
Councilmember Sanda.
I guess the planning and board. One was.
One was four and two were against and two abstained, so.
That was actually last, last time, the most recent meeting, they unanimously.
Okay.
It was the first time that.
Yes, yes, that's confusing, but the first time, yes, it was. Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, I'm uh, I get small businesses, I know there are a lot of single uh chair beauty shops in Alpine that are in residential areas. That is a fact. Uh, and and I don't use them, but I have a mother who does. Uh, she's ninety-three years old, so. Hey, hey, I understand, and I'm a supporter of small businesses, when I was on council before, supported uh businesses in that people worked out of the house, cause that was their source of income. Uh, in this case, I uh I'm in, I'm not in favor of this. Uh, one, planning and zoning spent considerable time walking through it. I get the point, it's a tough balance working back and forth. I do hope, and I'm really looking forward to planning and zoning, spending a considerable amount of time coming back to us with what's it look like, what the map looks like. Uh, and while there's C one across the street or C two, uh, I worry about the implications, and I also say we have thirty-two empty commercial buildings in the city of Alpine, thirty-two. Uh, and I get worried, we have so many that are empty and uh and we don't have enough residential. And so I'm not in favor of supporting a change from residential to a commercial.
Okay, any other discussion or comments?
I would say one thing, just that I think it's important to know that legally from our ordinances, this could be a C two. Without the protest or anything else like that, there's nothing stopping this property from being a C two from what we currently have written. Um, I feel like that is important. And I think it is important too, when we come back in and look at it from a business perspective, on how long it has taken them to go through the permit process. But also as well as when the the climate that we're actually creating for small business owners and everything else on, when we talk about thirty properties not being available for uh, you know, people to use, we're really not solving that problem of why they're not, why there isn't a commercial property for those people, we're not solving that today. Um, she's, that property's been pushed over to that because of that issue, but we really, we don't have a solution for the thirty properties uh from economic development or anything else right now. And I would say too that we just, I mean, even with, we're allowing short-term rentals, which to me is somewhat of a spot zone to allow commercial property within a residential zone from an STR, every time we okay and approve an STR within a spot, it's not in a commercial area, it's in a residential area.
We don't get a choice on that, that's staple.
Totally different, and what do you say to the people that live in the area that don't wanna see their neighborhood turn into a commercial area? I mean, I think that they have a voice too. They don't have the option of getting, most of them, I would think, do not have the option of getting up and just moving somewhere else. A lot of these people have have put in a lot of money in their homes and don't have the option of just getting up and going somewhere. Whereas a business has an option of going and renting another place to have their business. I think that the people that live there and and have spent their savings and have have made plans for that to be their home, need to have just a stronger voice as a business owner.
Councilmember Stokes?
Well, you know, I've I've spoken last night, but I will say that these these houses were bought knowing that the city was there, the jail was there, the the legion was there, they they, that that fringe is on it. And this this place is right by it. I mean, it isn't like it's gonna bring in as many cars as what's already coming in, and I know that's their problem. I do think that, like I say, this is the less intrusive. Um, if she shuts down and something else comes, they have to bring it before us. It's the same, it's the same thing, it doesn't just go, Dollar Store can't buy, see, that's all I've heard, we all are gonna build another Dollar Store, well, I didn't build the one that was there, so if I can get over that, I, you know, when people sell their property, I can't help it. But these people aren't selling the property, they're just gonna improve it. So I appreciate everybody's comments, I mean, this is, this is what it had to be, and this is why I sent it back to planning and zoning. You know, I wasn't pleased with their, I think there was not any discussion over it, they'd made up their mind and they vote, and then they said, once again, these are my thoughts, and they voted and they were done. So I felt like we ought to have a discussion over it. I I don't, I don't think that CO is bad, I I think if you start doing special use on every single little thing, you're gonna have a mess, and I think y'all are gonna see that with this little map he has. But I could be wrong on that too, I'm not right about everything.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens, you were first, and Councilmember Rodriguez?
My concern about C zero is, once changed to C zero, that house can be demolished and you can put an office complex in there. And I don't think that's appropriate, so that's where I come from on it, it's not just, it's, I I I support, I actually support the fifth one with special use, cause it's already happening with the city illegally. And I think supporting Tara is the right way to put put a uh, put the beauty salon there, I think it's a good use of her. Frankly, if I was the property owner, I would, and they've spoken to us that says, hey, they wanna turn it into a bird sanctuary. Frankly, if I owned that property, I'd put a deal out right now and put a condit, a uh a covenant on that that says, and I could do that as the property owner, it shall be only used for the following, and it must be followed from then on. Uh, that limitation to be put in place. Uh, but given the current circumstances, I look and say, changing to a C zero opens up a whole set of doors relative to an office facility going in there, particularly given the size of the property. Which if I owned it, I'd probably look and say, yeah, that's probably what I'd go do with it, I'd buy it, put an office complex in, and I'm not a residential area as well. Um, we are, we are, I think we have a lot of work to do in the city relative to planning and zoning. Uh, and I'm, I'm looking forward to planning and zoning, doing their work.
Councilmember Rodriguez, you were next.
With the changes that we heard, as far as the information we have been providing being incorrect, that you are able to put your business in the property you have now, why is that not an option? Are you talking?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry, I didn't like your addressing her, you state your name and word.
You're a line word. Uh, what was your question?
We had, we were told earlier that the information we had been provided before uh was incorrect, with being that you could not put your business in the commercial property that you now have.
Uh huh.
Well, since you can, why is that not an option?
So, uh, as I had stated when it was asked before and what Jenny had brought up, that she gave me that information about not being able, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question.
Why don't you want? Since you can't.
Well, I I definitely don't wanna be mixing my business and personal.
So what about, what about the homeowners that don't want them to to mix their personal life, their 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 home with a business?
I can, I can appreciate what you're saying, but I.
I mean, you have an option, they don't, I guess that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, is that.
So I, what I don't understand is what the ultimate option is that they don't have. Can you explain what you're trying to?
You have an option of moving your shop to a building that you now have, that you now own, there's no issues of rezoning. Nobody is put it put off because it's already so commercial.
Mm-hmm.
These people don't have, most of them, I would assume, do not have the option of just up and moving from where they are now, to go to a residential area, which they thought they were residing in, or that's what they thought.
Yeah, so I still don't really get where you're going with this, but they would still be living in a residential, where they're living is a residential.
Right, but now they.
Um, but they also. Uh huh, the buffer, right?
Commercial is just eas, just easing on over to their side.
Right, that's what the C zero, from my understanding, would help prevent, is from that easing over and encroaching even more into their neighborhood.
Like Mr. Stevens brought up, the owners could throw their house down tomorrow and build an office building. I mean, what what these property owners are seeing is that little by little, commercial area is just moving closer and closer to their homes.
Okay.
Oh, I would say one thing about TDLR, cause we had that sent to us about what that was, and it required a separate entrance. It required a separation between the home and the business during business hours.
Right.
Without being in your home, we don't know if that exists. If you have two entrances where, if you put this in your house over there, on where you currently live, the commercially zoned area, if you have two entrances with one mark as exit or not, that's what TDLR actually mentioned in that um uh thing that we read today.
Right.
Uh, so that was all new to me, to you to find out that you have to have that separation between business for you during your hours.
Yeah.
I was gonna say one thing, when we, when we look at it from a commercial perspective as well, when you are in that neighborhood as a residential person, you can walk out of your house and you don't want a commercial property two hundred feet in front of you, but if you do, you have to walk three hundred feet to your right. I mean, to me, that's hard to to put within my brain uh that close of a distance for how this is as a contiguous, which we've said is a less intrusive property and everything else. And when we say we can, if somebody came in and wiped that property down and came in and built a two uh or a three-story office building, we should be so lucky for someone to invest that capital in Alpine, because we have zero of it. We have a lot of businesses that are open, that no one's renting or anything else like that. If someone came in and wiped that property out and said, I'm gonna go build a building for seven hundred thousand dollars, and that's gonna be commercial property, I would think we wouldn't push that away, we would consider that growth, which is what the concept, I think, that I was missing in this, it is. All these things, when you go from R one to R two, R two to R three, in larger cities, it's called growth, because there's, you're trying to keep home prices down, so you you go, you increase density, or you expand your commercial footprint, because you're making money, and all these kind of things.
I have a question, would you consider it growth if you were next door to this two-story, three-story building, and you can no longer go out in your backyard, because people in the two-story and three-story can now see into your area? There there there's, I I I'm all for small businesses, I please understand this, and I am all for for growth. And that's what the commercial part of our city is for. I think that we need to understand what these people are going through, that they're the ones that are going to be, to be put out by all this. It's easy for us to sit up here and for me to say, I I I want this growth, and let's go for a two-story building. These people are the ones that have to live with it, these people are the ones that have to lose their their privacy or their life is a very competitive, and I guess what I'm having a harder issue with this is that there is another, there's other options. They don't, that their options are limited.
Councilmember Sandarte?
No more questions.
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Councilmember Stokes? Councilmember Nance? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Call question.
Call the question?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna call for the question. Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve the zoning change designation for four oh one West Soul Ross from R two to family district to CO office services district. Um, and make a finding that CO office district is less intensive and more appropriate zoning district than the applied for C two business district. Okay, all in favor of approving this zoning change to CO office district, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary, we have councilmember Stokes and councilmember Nance approving. All in, um, all who oppose this motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary, councilmember Rodriguez, Sandarte, and Stevens vote against this motion to approve it for a C zero. No one abstained. Okay, let's move on to action item number two, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash one two dash zero two. An ordinance amending appendix C zoning, Article One, Schedule of Districts, Section Two, R one, one family district to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, repealing the requirement that beauty salons are not acceptable use in residential area by approved special use permit, providing the establishment of up to a five hundred dollar penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance. The planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of the ordinance.
Hey, I need a motion.
I'll move to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three twelve dash zero two, ordinance amending appendix C and zoning and schedule of districts and everything written that the city manager just went through.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, city manager, would you like to start us out, since it's your item?
So during the discussion at the last council meeting, it was discussed the various options and um compromises that the city could look at, including the rezoning. Currently, R one does not allow beauty salons for special use permits, which means R twos do not allow them either. Um, it was brought back before planning and zoning as well, to discuss, to discuss all the options available. And you have heard from Dave or Andrew Devaney, um, as well as other members. Um, it does have a downward spiral, so R one goes into R two, R two, R three, R four. Um, currently, it is being recommended by the planning and zoning. And this would amended to allow for special use permit applications for this particular type of business. Um, and council would have those go before them as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
So I I get the point about concerns about the flooding of uh of uh beauty salons throughout the city of Alpine, my view is they're already out there anyway. Uh, I'm a supporter of small business. Uh, in in my view, uh, while you never wanna get into a quote-unquote what I call a compromise situation, I I do believe this is a win-win-win. Uh, I think we have work to do on zoning, I think this helps take care of Tara, continue her business. Uh, I have got the feedback from all of those who are against the uh the C zero, and they are supportive of this as well. So I think it's, given the situation, not ideal, uh, but I think it's the way to go forward that meets the needs of uh Tara, and I think it meets the needs of the residents. And and I know we're gonna be doing work on the the activities, I still am concerned about the number of commercial buildings. I I don't think it's a, I I I I would be disappointed if someone wanted to roll in, build in a big office building around here, where they have so many commercial spaces available. And I think we council will need to spend some time on economic development, because when you drive through town, you got that many that are empty, we are missing out on a huge opportunity, and we gotta go figure that one out. But that's a separate subject, so I support this.
Councilmember Sandarte?
Is that a five hundred dollar penalty, the maximum these are, for occurrence?
If you violate it.
If you.
So the businesses that are currently operating in residential that aren't allowed to, we could go in and penalize them.
And I'm not gonna call my mom.
Councilmember Nance?
So then, anyone that's cutting hair in a residential area right now, are we giving them a set amount of time before they get a CUP?
A what?
Uh, conditional use.
That's a new term you added.
Yeah, yeah, so remember, we're getting rid of acronyms.
And if if, say, um, someone is cutting hair in a residential area right now, how long are they gonna have to get a conditional use permit, once this ordinance passes? And how many public sessions will they go through, so that this could actually occur again, when somebody doesn't want a conditional use permit in that location?
Same as the SDR discussion we just had.
Answer all of your questions. One, there is no time limit, because we would have to discuss that as part of the second reading to include that we give each one an opportunity. Two, we have no clue, because we don't have a business permit process or signup process to know who's operating illegally.
Yeah, that's true.
Three, the process would take just as long as it's taken for for Tara, because you'd have to go for planning and zoning, and then you would have to go before council. So even for those who are operating illegally to become compliant, you would have to give them a minimum of at least three months.
Probably six.
If we don't have forum, it pushes it back even further. We have to provide public notice to everyone, and you'd have to sit here and make the same conversation as far as, do we allow it, do we wanna upgrade it? So the ordinance itself may need to be more in-depth, and specifically, what are you requiring with these special use permits or?
So so along those lines, we allow special permits for daycare centers, educational facilities, home occupations, civic approval of home occupation application provisions, libraries, museums, municipal buildings, and other installations, parks, and religious assemblies. We don't have a process for that? Oh, my goodness.
Okay, most of what you see as far as those exemptions encompass what was already in those zones. So if a church wanted to expand and they bought a property next to them, and it was in that same zone, they would have to apply obviously for a special use permit. This is my understanding of our zoning ordinance, is the way it was written encompassed what was currently in place. And then the idea was, well, if the city went and started buying the properties, we would have to obviously go through. And then the idea was, well, if the city went and started buying the properties, we would have to obviously go through a process. But no, we have not put procedures in place for this process that I'm aware of.
So if I wanted to start a daycare service. Then there's no process for me to go through that other and say, I wanna start a daycare service. Oh, no, I got state issues. I understand.
You would fill out a special use permit and then it would come before council and we would have the same type of conversation with a fine zone. Thank you, too. Um fine and zoning, they'd go through, okay, well, what does the state say? What does the city say?
That's why I say so. It's like a six month process to really kind of get through all that.
Okay, alright, Matt?
Okay, I just wanted to say, and Tara already knows this also. These home based businesses, a home based barbecue uh uh bar barbering and cosmetology establishment. Are already regulated by the state. They have to meet certain state requirements. For example, ha- everybody has to be licensed.
Yep.
Twice a year, your license, uh and it has to be posted. There has to be a separate entrance. It cannot be the entrance into your house. There must be a sign posted. Is showing the type of establishment. And it must be a dedicated space. You cannot have access to the house from that business. So those are regulations already set by the state. They would have to meet that.
I would ask them, with all these regulations, how is this gonna work when these uh businesses come in and ask for the conditional use permit? Well, I guess we're gonna have to go in and verify that they have two entrances and that they.
Well, this this does refers to uh bar barbering and cosmetology. I don't know about the other, those other businesses.
And that's what we're allowing within the R one, right? Barbering and cosmetology?
Yes.
So we'll be, I guess we'll have to figure that out and the verify, is that Devaney question goes in and make sure they have two exits and.
I don't know about the two exits, but the.
Or the separation.
So but a- and they are, they are subject to state inspection.
Get a little more on what we'd have to do that, especially with separate entrance. There's obviously gonna be a financial cost on that, but that that would all be per part of the permitting process. So we will do inspections before any beauty salons or any home based businesses in that attachment do open up.
Have you been over there to look at Tara's file?
Yes.
We've never asked him that. And they're they're it, you're opening it up to a lot more because it's not, it's a permitting process. It's the building process, it's the state process. Um but we have sign ordinances, so she just can't put a big boxy sign in the yard either. Um no one really can do that. Um but you're right, we don't have, we don't have.
Can't take your sign down.
Those things would have been covered under a C zero, I'm assuming signage, everything else.
They would have fallen the guidelines and regulations of that, yes, not through a special use permit or conditional use.
The the issue we're running into is we're a city. And you know, in the past, we just kind of operated, people did whatever they're gonna do. And and if we're gonna be a city, then we gotta think about working our way through. It's a messy process, I agree. But my view is, and we've heard it from all the S D R applications, people complaining about S D Rs. We gotta get our processes put in place. And so these are the right discussions to go have, even though they're a painful discussion to work through because they take time. It takes some agreements.
I agree with you on that. But I hate to see us going into something, opening ourselves up to something that 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 there's more problems or more issues that we need to deal with. We we keep saying that we need to work on these things, that they need to change and all this, but then we keep allowing. We keep allowing things to be to be approved according to that ordinance. When do we put a stop to it and 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 not open up Pandora's box and fix the issue we have before we go on?
So you can't fix the issue until you change the ordinance. Doesn't just stop, it's what's in place and what's enforced. So as we have these items and you've seen the emails from me with, I envision we are going to continue to have these issues. This is why you have your boards and commissions, you task them with looking at these things. But for me, it's breaking down those tasks. If you wanna know what you want in R one. Then you need to give them the time to fully understand what do we want in R one, what do we want in R two. Um the map was the first thing that was a key. Like I said, Matt Walters did a great job, planning and zoning did a great job because. We don't know if a C two is in the middle of an R four or an R two and all of a sudden, everything around it can grow. Um without that visually there for people.
Right, but then opening this up, like you said, it's gonna be what, R one and R two?
Or?
For the C O?
For the special use, you open up for R one, R two, R three, R four.
Okay. Yes, right.
Yes, which in I stated, it's not a bad thing. It does open up different avenues, but you know, it could be. I think we'll have more conditional use.
And and you're absolutely right. Wh- when does it stop? You know, we approve this one or we don't approve this one, but then we still have to to move forward. How do we approve the next one or if someone else questions it? You unfortunately have to have that, okay, we did it for this one, but we're gonna put in rules for everyone else. And and it's hard because like Rick said, we're a city. You have to keep moving forward, you have to keep doing something. But we can't just not do anything and you have people who actively wanna make a difference in elk. So yes, it's a very hard decision to make today, but it's also going back to finding zoning and and amongst yourselves and saying, okay, we wanna make the difference. We wanna make changes, is what we wanna see. Direct planning and zoning, come up with a recommendation and let's move forward. Because we have zones that are zoned that people are gonna fight because, well, I really want, you know, to open up something here. And I have this huge piece of property, but because I'm locked into this this zone, how do I do it? No, we don't wanna go into spot zoning zoning, but we also wanna fully understand what is our commercial footprint? What do we want? We didn't want lithium batteries, but guess what? I can have someone come in tomorrow with an application because we've not done anything to move forward with making this change.
The other I come in, Tara's come forward and says, here's what I'd like to go do. She's asking for help to go forward. I happen to like that because that's one, supporting a business, but the other, someone's trying to follow some rules. With a bunch of others who are not, okay? I'm not after going rooting them out. But I do think we wanna reward those people, even though it's this messy right now. We haven't figured it out. How to help Tara, because we got some work to do as a city. That's my thought process.
Councilmember Stokes?
And see, I I I agree with both sides. I know that doesn't make sense to y'all, but I do agree with both sides. You know, I tell these people who do the S D Rs, I don't want them next door to me with nineteen cars and not knowing who's in whom and are they all felons? Do they have guns, you know? And I don't have that, so I don't have to worry about it. And yet we're telling these people, oh, doesn't matter that that's what you're gonna get in your neighborhood. I fully understand the people who didn't, who who foresee a three story building going in over there. In my mind, I don't ever see that. So that's, that's why I made the recommendation I did. If doing this will get you in business over there, then I'm gonna vote for it. Do I think it's right? No, because I think it is gonna open up a can of tea. I don't think the other would have, but I think this one's going to. You know, you're gonna have people going, well, they're all gonna start calling. Well, yeah, my neighbor cuts hair. I know she does. I I mean, you're gonna have every town to tell in Alpine. All these people are gonna do now for months is answer the phone. If somebody has a yard business, you know, I I do the cemetery. It's not a business, but I put a load of weed eater in my car. Am I gonna have to get a special use permit to do the cemetery? I mean, you know, see, and I don't want it to turn into that. I agree with Rick. I don't think Rick understands what you faced when you tried to buy a grid commercial building. They are thousands of dollars. These people think they own the Taj Mahal. And it's not, they're not, and a small business can't go rent them. That's why they're in food trucks now. That's why they're in the saddle club now. They they can't even afford the food trucks because they're on a piece of property and these people wanna charge them two thousand. Where you don't even break even for the whole month. I mean, if you're not breaking even, get out of the business. And I I don't, I didn't wanna see her doing that and have to rent a food truck and cut hair. That might be fun, though. I don't know. So so I see both sides of it. I I I know everybody ain't gonna think I do, but I do see both sides. And if this will get her in business, I guess that's good. But then we need to really, really set in place and be ready to say no or yes. Uh that's all it's gonna boil down to.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
I guess what I'm gonna ask council is that we be fair in how we do this. There are businesses here in Alpine or people that have bought properties thinking that they're going to be running. Or being able to make a living off of off of what they, the land they just bought that are being told, no, they can't. These people are not always given the same amount of help that Tara has been given. So I wanna, if we're gonna go this route, then I wanna see council take, I mean, agree that we need to help. The person down the street that wants to, that that wants to open a trailer park. But can't because it's 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 now changed.
In a historic district?
Hmm, I wanna know, I wanna know that council is going to be fair and give this this kind of help to everybody else. I guess that's that's all I wanna ask is that if we're gonna do this, that's great. Let's keep it across the board and let's be fair.
Councilmember Nance? Councilmember Sandate? Councilmember Stevens?
What I wanna make is is that every one of the residents around there are supportive doing this. And and I think that's part of the discussion. We have a process in place. If someone wanted to set up something, a a beauty salon in a residence and the residents came around and said no. And they went to planning and zoning, you're planning zoning, he said no, it would take four out of five of us to say, yay verily. I think that's part of the process.
I do wanna make note that I I I got letters where some of the the neighbors are not in favor of it.
Okay, I'm not, I've not sent any of those.
I'll ask for the question.
Okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance. Twenty twenty three, wait, am I in the right place? Yeah, twenty twenty three dash twelve dash oh two. Uh amending appendixy article one, schedule of district, section two, R one, one family district to the Alpine code of ordinances, repealing the requirement. The beauty salons are not an acceptable use in a residential area by approved special use permit. Providing the establishment of up to a five hundred dollar penalty per occurrence of violations of the ordinance. So all in favor of approving this to repeal the requirement that beauty salons are not an acceptable use. In a residential area, please raise your right hand. Okay, city secretary, we have councilmember Stokes and Dante and Stevens Stevens voting in favor. All of those opposed, raise your right hand. We have councilmember Rodriguez and councilmember Nance. That don't want to approve this. We have nobody abstaining. So the motion carries. Alright, moving on to action item number two, city manager.
Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash one two dash zero three. An ordinance amending the city of Alpine fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget. Provide repealing inseverability clauses of Texas Open Meetings Act clause and providing an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance twenty twenty three dash. Well, that's your order submitting the city of Alpine twenty twenty three, twenty four.
Okay, discussion, city manager?
Um when we passed the budget, there was the underlying um. Exchange of discussion that we were going to amend it right off the bat. Um the amendment is focused on the fact that the original budget was approved with a higher tax rate, so a higher property tax revenue. That's been amended to uh align with the estimated on our current tax rate. Um as well as amending the expenses that would have benefited from that additional income. Um specifically, the public works department, uh capital improvement, street project. That doesn't remove all of the the silicone paving from the budget. It just provided that uh extra amount of money. Um it does utilize a portion of the fund balance in order to continue with the priority projects of a new accounting utility billing software. And the employee um review. Um it does, I did provide kind of a summary for those who kind of wanted to know the bottom line. The original budget adopted was seventeen million one twenty three hundred and ninety five dollars. And the total um amended budget comes to sixteen million eight hundred and thirty two thousand. So it is a decrease from the original.
Okay. Councilmember Stokes? I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make it fair here. I can, well, let's start with councilmember Nance.
No comment.
Okay, councilmember Sandate? Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Stevens?
Say thank you, Megan, for bringing it forward.
Councilmember Stokes?
And what what happens to the equipment? It can can um, maybe still buy a equipment? So yes, so we're still moving forward with that. This was just the, I I know a little bit of that. We're still moving forward and if anything does change, it comes back before council to amend. If we need to use more fund balance or reserve. That that's a conversation. This is just to start off.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, alright, so let's call for the question. Approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty three dash twelve dash oh three, an ordinance amending the city of Alpine. Fiscal year twenty three, twenty four budget, providing repealing and severability clause. Says a Texas Open Meetings Act clause, providing an effective date. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Hey, city secretary, it passes unanimously. Alright, it's been an hour and a half and at this point, we're gonna take a break. Much needed, huh, city secretary?
Oh, good.
Thank you. Okay, the ten-minute break is now over. We're back in session.
Mayor, I would like to move that we move action item number five. Up before we do number four.
Okay, and the reason is?
Uh, we have a representative of those market that has to get out of here.
Okay, all right. All right, so we have a motion to move item number five up above number four.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, so that passes unanimously. City Secretary, remove an item number five. Prior to item number four. City Manager, would you read out item number five?
Approve special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero-five. A special use permit for the purpose of allowing the applicant Lowe's Market number one seventy-eight. To obtain a wine-only package store permit from the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission to operate a grocery store with alcohol sales. The property in question is located at one oh four North Second Street. The record property owner is Porter and Company, L T D. The property ID of the subject property is one-one-seven-nine-two.
Hey, I need a motion.
I still move.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, City Manager, would you like to start us out?
Um, so this is the normal process for a business, um, to apply for a special use permit to sell alcohol within the city limits. Um, they did come before the city, they had filled out all of the paperwork. The building in which they are in is the former Porter's. Uh, which also sold alcohol, um, wine and beer. Um, they're just following the standard procedures to continue that business.
Okay. Councilmember Stevens?
Another question I have, it says, so does Porter still own the property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sandate?
No question.
Councilmember Nance?
No question.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
My question, just, um, hope that Lowe's just, um, enjoys their time in Alpine.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes? We ready for the question? All in favor to approve special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh five for the purpose of allowing applicant Lowe's Market to obtain a wine only, please raise your right hand. All right, all right, City Secretary, it passes unanimously for the special use permit twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash oh five.
Not that we're rushing to do that.
Yeah. Well, technically to be proper, that's what you're supposed to do, correct, City Secretary? Technically to be.
Yeah, I'm gonna just restate the motion.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so that passed unanimously. Going to action item number four, City Manager.
Approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash one-two dash zero-two. A resolution authorizing participation with the city served by A E P Texas. Authoring, authorizing the hiring of legal counsel, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed and open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to legal counsel.
Okay, I need a motion.
So move based upon the reading of the City Manager.
Okay, I need a second.
So good.
Discussion, City Manager, start us out.
So, um, this kind of goes in line with what we've been working with A E P. A E P, um, can raise their rates. They call it the distribution cost recovery factor, it was once a year. We're now being allowed to do it twice a year. Lloyd Gosling and, um, attorney, uh, group has come before multiple cities and asked for us to participate with them. We do have Mr. Rick Arnett, who is part of this law firm online. When I received the initial email, I did forward it to our attorney's work and law firm and questioned whether this is something we wanna participate. And of course, the bottom line is what does it cost? A E P is looking at increasing the rate, which of course affects our residents. It's, you know, it's gonna be passed along. Um, they're trying to get together to kind of reduce that. Um, I would like Mr. Arnett to kind of further explain the process. The bottom line for me, being the finance side, is there's no cost to the city of Alpine. Um, but also when we talk about the franchise agreement with A E P and passing on any increases we ourselves as a city may, um, introduce. I think this is kind of, it goes. Within each other, we, we need to have these conversations. So Mr. Arnett, um, I don't know if you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear y'all. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, um, kind of further explaining, and then we do have Joey Delgado, who is our representative online as well, for additional questions.
Okay.
Yes, well, first thanks to y'all for having me today. Um, A E P, as previously mentioned, is now authorized to file two distribution cost recovery factor applications a year. They're known as D C R Fs. Uh, basically, a D C R F allows the utility to recover investments related to distribution wires, poles, et cetera, that. Uh, allow the company to serve end-use customers, such as the city of Alpine. And. We represent a city coalition, what we as in Lloyd Gosling represent a city coalition, a city served by A E P Texas. And then this, as this coalition, uh, or as representative of this coalition. We intervene in the rate case in the D C R F, which right now is in front of the Public Utility Commission of Texas. The Public Utility of Commission is tasked to review this application and ultimately determine whether, uh, A E P's requests are reasonable and therefore recoverable. However. A E P or city served by A E P Texas intervenes. We retain a consultant who independently reviews the application, raises issues with the application. Ultimately raises these issues with the commission and the applicant, in this case, A E P. Uh, the goal is to reach a settlement that would reduce the requested rates, and we almost always do. And so that's why we request all cities within A E P's service area to join. All of the legal fees are reimbursed by A E P Texas to the participating cities. Uh, pursuant to Texas statute. And so there's really no reason not to join. However, the greater number of applicant, or the greater number of cities that are in our coalition strengthens our position in settlement to ultimately reduce costs. Um, if y'all have any additional questions, I'm available.
Councilmember Stevens?
So, so how many cities are part of the coalition right now?
Right now, we have three cities, the city of McAllen, Refugio, and Alton. However, those are the only cities that have, uh, actually signed the resolution and sent it back. Several cities, uh, it's, um, I don't have a hard number, but several cities are in the process of reviewing these resolutions signings such as y'all. So that number will certainly rise in the near future.
So what's your target? Where, where are you wanting to be if you're really gonna have strength in negotiations?
The target is as many cities as we can get. Uh, there is no set number, really. Uh, however, the more cities, I know that's not probably the answer you're looking for, but. The more cities we get in our coalition shows that cities care about these utility matters and cities are very important, uh, customers for the utility. So the more customers that are contesting this application, the better, really. Uh, we usually have, oh, so we usually have an A E P's service area, at least fifty cities, though, so we're hoping to get more.
Is there an alter? Is there another law firm, or this is it?
This is the only one that's reached out. I, I do wanna kind of make a comment in regards to being a small city. When this email comes across, I, I'm not gonna lie to you, I look at it like, eh, it's just, you know, another junk email or another thing. But in discussing how the city wants to move forward and the impact on our residents, every email that comes in, uh, it has to be evaluated. And then according to an attorney to make sure is, does it have a legal force for us?
Yeah.
I think it's gonna be harder with a lot of the smaller cities understanding the full impact. We know the full impact because I have a council right now before me who said, hey, I don't want our residents to constantly being, you know, bombarded with increased fees and changes. So when this came across at no cost, it's like, why not? We don't have anything to lose, but we're also looking at our franchise fees as well with A E P. So I, I think this just worked out perfect timing. Ideally, I would prefer everyone, no one else has reached out, Rick.
And, and Council, if I may add one additional point. The city of Alpine has participated in our coalition for over twenty years, I believe. It's what my boss had told me before he left, so. This has been a, a common practice on y'all's behalf.
So, so, I, I'm sorry, I just, and the, the approximate two dollar nine cent increase which they are proposing.
Correct.
On the average, is that a annual basis or monthly basis?
A monthly basis.
Okay, so that's sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars for residents of our city. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
What, what do we gain by being in it? So what they're doing is they're gonna go before the Public Utility Commission, argue that that two dollar nine cent increase is too high. They want it lower. Um, and they're gonna base it off of all of the research and then the, the parties that they're going through to prove that what A E P is asking. Is, is far beyond what they really.
They're on our side.
They're on our side.
Sounds like a win-win, doesn't it?
And it doesn't cost us. Oh, well, then I like it.
Well, I asked how many cases you gotta have.
Councilmember Sandate?
No cost it.
Councilmember Nance? Councilmember Rodriguez?
And that's twenty-five a year for me. Is that right?
Two dollars, about two dollars, so yeah. Then we got the nine cent.
Five more dollars a year for something I'm not really used to.
Yeah, or sixty thousand for residents.
For all of us.
And if we didn't have them do it, we gotta go do it, or we don't do it.
Which is probably what would happen, because we're short-staffed.
So, so we do pay our own attorneys to help us make sure legally we're following everything we need to do and provide that guidance. But we're not paying them the full pledge. I'm gonna be before the Public Utility Commission. I'm gonna sit there for hours and argue that A E P only deserves two oh eight instead of two oh nine.
I would say a dollar.
They typically do get it. But so they've already had one opportunity to give them a second opportunity, so as they're increasing it, this.
Was it higher? I mean, was it higher than the two oh nine?
For the first time?
Yeah.
I don't remember the exact number of the first go-round.
Was it higher the first time?
So I, I can go back and look what they, uh, ultimately received the first time, but something that's, uh, unique about D C R Fs is they're cumulative in nature. So the first one is already applied to y'all's utility bills. However, the second one would be tacking on an additional two oh nine to what they received in that first D C R F.
When that's presented on a bill, is that presented as one, uh, fee, or does it show the two?
Presented as one, I believe. It's just presented as the D C R F, the distribution cost recovery factor.
And just so you guys are all aware, this affects the city, too.
Sure, not just us as residents, but.
Which is why we enter, who we ultimately intervene on behalf of is the cities in the context of the cities who actually purchased the power from the ERCOT grid.
Okay, we ready to call for the question? Okay, all right, so all in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash oh two. A resolution authorizing participation with the city served by A E P Texas. Authorizing the hiring of legal counsel, please raise your right hand. Okay, City Secretary, it passes unanimously, so it has been approved, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve dash oh two. All right, moving along. City Manager, action item number six.
Approve replat twenty twenty-three dash eleven dash zero run. A replat application allowing the applicant Jose Cobos. To combine lots in order to provide the ability to use a primary address at the subject property without the necessity of building a primary structure on the lot. The subject property is located at South Sixth Street and West Avenue F and is legally, legally described as lots five and six, block fifty-five. Original town site of Alpine, Texas, as shown in the subdivision plat on file in volume two, page ninety-seven. Feed records of Brewster County, Texas. The record property owner is Jose Cobos. The property ID of the subject property is three-five-eight-three-two. The current zoning classification of the property is R three apartment district. If the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R three apartment district. The Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of this replat.
Hey, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion as, uh, read by the City Manager.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all right, discussion, City Manager, start us out.
Um, so this individual originally came before the Building and Services, um, wanting to utilize a portion of property he owned. Um, so this individual originally came before the building and services um wanting to utilize a portion of property he owned. But based on our ordinances, the property would have to have a primary structure, i.e. a house. Um, but he didn't want to build the whole house. He just wanted to locate an R V, I believe, on the property. Um, a lot of research and a lot of detection wa- was had. Um, he did finally come back before the city to replat it. So instead of it being two single lots, it will become one single lot. With his primary residence on one and then he could utilize the other part um as wanted or as needed. Um, of course, following the ordinances. Um, it is not being rezoned. It is staying within the same zone. It's just taking his single or double lots and putting them into.
He's putting what on the other side, on the other one, sorry?
At one point, there was discussion about an R V, about a storage unit, about. It just the way our ordinance reads it, in order for it to be utilized, it has to have a primary structure before you can add the second.
Okay, Councilmember Stokes. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Nance. Stevens.
I'm very familiar with the properties. I've spent a lot of time with Joe on this and I'm glad he finally brought it for me.
Okay. All right, so. Gonna call for the question. All right, all in favor of approving replat twenty twenty three dash eleven dash oh one for applicant Jose Cobos, please raise your right hand. City Secretary, resolution twenty twenty three dash eleven dash oh one passes unanimously. All right, action item number seven, city manager.
Approved replat twenty twenty three dash eleven dash zero two, a replat application allowing the applicant Ruben Montevera. To combine lots to allow the applicant to install a structure. Over currently existing common lot lines. The subject property is located at South Fourteenth and West Murphy Street and is legally described as lots five and six, block nine. Thomas Turney Higgins addition to the city of Alpine and has shown in the subdivision plat on file, an envelope one oh eight. Flat record of Brewster County, Texas. The record property owners are Ruben Montevera and Yevis. Padres, thank you. The property ID of the subject property is one, two, eight, eight, five. The current zoning classification of the property is R four mobile home district. If the replat is approved, the zoning classification will remain R four. Mobile home district. The zoning, the planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of this replat.
Hey, I need a motion.
I propose approval of the motion as read by the city manager.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, city manager, start us out.
So this is uh multiple lots. They are currently vacant. The individual has bought a single mo- mobile home and is moving it in. Instead of conforming to the. South and north, he wants it west and east, which would mean that the mobile home would be in the middle of both those lots. In order to be able to have services provided, it has to be a single lot, so he's asking for it to replat so that he can keep his mobile home where it's at.
Okay. Councilmember Nance. Councilmember Sandarte. Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Stokes. All right, we're gonna call for the question. So all in favor to approve replat twenty twenty three dash eleven dash oh two for applicant Ruben. And. Yeah, this. Uh, please raise your right hand. You, all right, City Secretary, it passes unanimously to approve the replat twenty twenty three dash eleven dash oh two. All right.
Mayor, may I interrupt to ask for a motion to continue past nine o'clock?
Absolutely. I need a motion to continue past nine o'clock.
My motion received past nine o'clock.
I need a second.
Seconded if we won't.
If we won't, uh, any discussion? All all in favor of continuing past nine o'clock, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously to continue past nine o'clock. Hopefully that won't happen, but just in case. All right, so now we're at council member comments. Mind if I call on you first?
Oh, no. I I I think we made progress with our S G R, you know, I I thought we always had their approval. But I was led to believe and that's why I was doing it. But if they're not, they're not doing right and they're. They need to be stopped. I mean, that's that's. It's not right. It's like me getting a degree and then deciding we're going to school. I it's not. That's it's the same thing. And I don't like that. And to me, that is false advertising. And we don't want that. We don't want to be known as well. Y'all go out there and do that. They don't have, you know. And these people knew that. I'm not trying to be awkward, but they knew. They knew they had to do it. That's not a surprise. They, there's been too much in the, unless they are just permits. They know the S D R problem in Texas and you know they investigated it. And it really irritates me. I thank Andrew for coming and and explaining all that and the, no, he's not here anymore. Um, um. You know, I hope I hope uh. Terrace. Will use this S U P or whatever it is, or whatever she knows what she'll have to do now to to qualify for that. After all this, does she have to do something else to qualify for that?
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be until March at the earliest.
And and we really, I agree that we need to, we have got to do something with all these ordinances. I mean, all the zoning. You know, we can't rely on planning and zoning to do. To just do all of it. We have thoughts and either we need to go to the planning zoning meeting and share them with them. Or. Or s- something. I don't because I'm in another meeting, but I missed this time and I may start doing like every other month. Go so I can be.
Or just let me know what you want me to.
Well, you could go to the crisis.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nobody's crappy in here. And that's all my thoughts.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Been a long year, uh, but we did get a lot accomplished. Uh. I would like to thank everybody that continues to support the city of Alpine. And urge you to continue to be active uh to let your voice be heard. Uh, this is our last meeting, meeting of the year, so I want to wish everybody a happy new year and a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilmember Nance. Councilmember Matt. Councilmember Stevens.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the right discussions. Uh, no, and when I say the right.
Yes.
It's about the city of Alpine, and that's what we're talking about. And and we have differing opinions. In my view.
And I like that.
Uh, one, I get a chance to learn a lot coming to these meetings. And I think it's helpful to have the discussions because we all want the best for Alpine. And I think as we continue to focus on that, sharing diverse opinions is so critical for the city and I. I would like to compliment everyone for their great work and, you know, it's been a terrific year for the city as well and uh. And wish everyone a Merry Christmas as well.
Yes, and I want to do the same. It is our last meeting of the year. And it has been an absolute delight this year. I feel like council's getting a lot done. We are the ones that are wanting to. Make the changes that are needed. It's been a long time. Alpine's kind of stayed stagnant. I do like the discussions and we don't always agree and it's kind of neat to see as the votes occur sometimes. Um, it it was not divided, you know, somebody doesn't always vote against somebody else. It's really all about Alpine. And what's happening with Alpine and that's very important. And I appreciate those of you who come to these meetings and also um.
Larry still awake?
Yes, I know, that's amazing. And then Larry Hood has put in his application to be a board member. So if you have a vacancy for any of your seats, I noticed when I went back because I wasn't able. To attend planning and zoning, but I watched the YouTube video. He was there for that and he's been there for other ones. So we do have residents who are wanting to get involved and I would like to see them be able to do so and get more voices. But anyway, thank you guys very much. All right, so that brings us. To item number eleven, executive session. Pursuant to chapter five, five, one of the Texas government code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session. From time to time, deem necessary during this meeting for any proposed agenda item to receive advice from an attorney. As permitted by law. Tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to. Section five, five, one, point. Oh, seven, one. Conversations with an attorney. May I get a motion and a second to re- to go into executive session?
I'm moving on to executive session.
I need a second. Second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna proceed to a vote. All in favor, raise your right hands. Okay, City Secretary, it's unanimous that at. Eight twenty nine, we're moving into executive session. Okay, so Larry, what that means is that bye, guys, that only the council is here during this time. But residents are encouraged, if you want to and you have the time, you can wait and then come back in to see if we take any.
Okay. I'm ready. I need a second. I'll second. Okay. Any discussion? I have a motion in a second to reconvene into open session and close executive. Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor of moving back into open session, please raise your right hand. City Secretary, it passes unanimously to move into open session at 9:23 PM. Okay. All right. So, action after executive session. May I have a motion, please?
Well, Mayor, I move that we take no action on city attorney update items C and D. That's the first item.
Okay.
Number two, regard to the AEP franchise agreement that the city council authorized the city manager to work with AEP and the attorney to negotiate an agreement that minimizes the rate that would be presented before the residents at the statutory minimum and that the city manager negotiate any additional items that would be of benefit to the city at no cost may be, for example, to include a movement of utility, poles, and other items of benefit to the city. And that, number three of this action item, that the city manager be given authority to work with the city attorney to negotiate a customs and border protection hanger lease agreement renewal that provides the minimum term appropriate and increases the rate to a minimum of market rate for lease of that hanger during that period.
Okay. Please keep that up, councilmember. The motion. I need a second to Rick's motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No discussion. I would have, I like it all, is the one on the statutory minimum for that. It probably isn't pertinent because it will get negotiated in the future, but we're currently on the statutory minimum, but in the past we've been 2%, I think they said. So, that's non-material right now, right? Because we're just authorizing you to actually go out and...
We believe the statutory is below.
Okay. So, and we're just within this motion authorizing you to go out and negotiate.
You got it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Sandarte?
No.
Councilmember Rodriguez? Councilmember Stokes? Okay. Let's vote. All in favor of Rick's motion. Can you just summarize it real quick?
Do you authorize the city manager to negotiate with AEP the franchise agreement? And the city manager to negotiate the customs and border protection hanger lease renewal? And to take no action on items C and D from the consultation with the city attorney?
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. City Secretary, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. So, that moves so that we can adjourn. And we are going to adjourn this meeting right now at 9:26 PM.
Thank you.
All right. So, that moves so that we can adjourn. And we are going to adjourn this meeting right now at 9:26 PM.
Thank you.
All right. So, that moves so that we can adjourn. And we are going to adjourn this meeting right now at 9:26 PM.
Thank you.
All right. So, that moves so that we can adjourn. And we are going to adjourn this meeting right now at 9:26 PM.
Thank you.
All right. So, that moves so that we can adjourn. And we are going to adjourn this meeting right now at 9:26 PM.